Mr. Chair, you are now live.
All right, so confirm we're live.
You are indeed.
Mr. Sale, you're on mute. Mr. Sale?
Yes, I was pressing the spacebar and evidently it didn't work for me that time. Thank you, Mr. Waldman, my aged guidance here, telling the young guy how to work the technical issues. Welcome to the March 18th Planning Commission Meeting, and I'm Ben Sale, the chairman. I'm calling this meeting to order, and Ms. Tammy, please call the roll.
Mr. Sale?
Here.
Mr. Waldman?
Present.
Mr. Pline?
Present.
Ms. Butler?
Present.
Mr. Imes?
Here.
Okay, it looks like we have a confluence of commissioners, all of us, and it's good to see. We are still absent two positions that are being filled by the mayor's office. We can expect to see those in some time in the near future. I have displayed the agenda. Mr. Waldman, please confirm that you can see that on share. All right, fantastic. So I have the agenda here. We need to approve this agenda items as we see them. And the one thing to note before we do that is the comprehensive plan update. There's nothing for the staff to add today. So Item D will basically bypass that. No need to really modify the agenda. It's just, there's nothing there to add. And then the public hearings will keep those as they are. And for the public out there, notice that we've got two major site design reviews. Item number one and item number two that were presented last meeting, which is two weeks ago. Also, we had the moderately priced dwelling unit legislation, which was introduced two weeks ago. And then we'll, tonight, we will introduce for the first time the 04-21, the medical cannabis dispensaries. And that will be also continued to, that will be continued to the next meeting so we can gain more public input. And we will also portray public input at the next meeting as well as tonight if we can get to it. So we have a lot to get through before we get to item number four, which will be an introductory item. So if anyone is hanging around just for the last item, you might be able to go away for a good 45 minutes and come back. And that should give you ample enough coverage to be here for the last item. So just letting everybody know on the public or whatnot, you've got some time before we get to item number four. And finally, at the miscellaneous at the bottom is standard and adjournment. Okay, I have no issues with the agenda as written. Anyone else? I make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
There's a motion carried with a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries, the agenda is approved as written. Moving.
That me or is that him?
No, that's him. That's him.
Got it.
If it's okay with the other committee, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
While we have this glitch, would it be okay with the rest of the commission if I just took over the chair for a minute and...
Absolutely, you're the vice chair.
Ms. Butler?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Pline?
Most definitely.
Okay. The next item is our minutes. And if everybody has had the opportunity to read the minutes, I suggested to Ms. Hook, an otherwise exemplary set of minutes, only one thing, which had to do with a discussion that we had about postponements and if there were significant changes to an application during a postponement, like what would the advertising and renotice protocol be? And Mr. Scott aptly mentioned, brought to our attention last time, that when a specific date is set upon which to continue an application, there is no need to re-advertise. But when there is no date set, the applicant is under an obligation to re-advertise. And in which case, if the 101, 103 Annapolis application had gone forward, they would have been responsible to advertise. But they withdrew the application, so the issue is moot. But we are all well informed now by Mr. Scott. I have a phone call from Mr. Sale. Do you mind if I get it from him?
Of course.
Hello? You're the only one, and I'm taking, I just took over until you come back. Got you. Thank you. Bye. The next item on the agenda is the continuation of the hearing on the application by the city Department of Public Works for their...
Bob, there's just the findings to approve for the ordinance, the local map amendment.
Oh, I didn't notice that. As you, that has to do with the small property on Maryland Avenue, is that correct?
That's right.
All right. Which is thoroughly discussed. It's owned by an out-of-town owner. There's been no correspondence and the...
I sent out the draft findings.
Findings have been sent out. They've been reviewed by me and I assume by others. Is there any discussion on a, first of all, is there a motion to approve those findings?
I, so moved.
A second?
Second.
And is there any discussion on the approval of the findings? Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor of approving those findings, please say aye.
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 Any dissension or abstentions? Fine, they're approved. Thank you, Ms. Dr. Nash. Now we can return to the Department of Public Works, the continuation of the hearing from March 11th.
Bob, we didn't approve the minutes, are you gonna just wait on those?
Excuse me?
We didn't vote on the minutes, so do you want to just wait?
No, we did. And there was, it was, they were unanimously approved with the addition of Kevin, Mr. Scott's comment.
But Diane had some changes too.
Excuse me?
Diane had a significant amount of changes as well.
Oh, I hadn't seen those.
Okay, yeah, so...
But I apologize, they didn't come in till about 1 o'clock because I was having technical difficulties here. There's nothing really substantive, but if we could wait till the end, we could certainly approve them later.
My suggestion, given the agenda that we have tonight, and that since I haven't seen what, you know, your proposed changes, may I suggest that since I voted to approve them, that I can vote to retract that, that, I make a motion to retract that vote and to continue a discussion of those minutes until our next meeting, when we all had the opportunity to review them. Is there any? Is that, is that okay?
Yeah, I second the motion.
All right. Any discussion on that? Okay. I'm gonna call a vote on that motion to rescind the vote that we just took and move the discussion of the March 4th minutes to our next scheduled meeting. Any discussion?
Sounds good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any no? Okay, and no abstentions. All right, so we shall do that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Hook. Now we can go, maybe, to continue the hearing on the Department of Public Works facility. Is there anything, Mr. Scott, has anything come in from the public comment regarding the application?
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair. Kevin Scott for Department of Planning and Zoning, for the record. And the answer is no, we have not received any additional information or any public comments since the last hearing for March 4th.
Okay. I intend then to turn this over to the applicants. Whoever is leading the group, is it Mr. Johnson, Mr. Wilson? Who shall speak for ye?
Well, good evening. I mean, I'll sort of tee it off and then, you know, Leo can sort of, you know, pick up with some of the details. You know, we're glad to have the opportunity again to appear before the planning commission and to, you know, have our project reviewed. We have looked at some of the items that were sort of discussed during the last meeting, the meeting on the 4th. And in particular, we took a close look, a critical look at the desire for solar to be a fixture on the site and particularly attached to our building. And we, there are cost implications, there are maintenance implications. And I think we can achieve the desired goal of using more, a greater mix of green energy in a different way that is less injurious to the facility. One of the concerns that we have before we get into the details of that is that when penetrations are made into the building, we run the risk of voiding warranties, of getting into creating a climate of claims where if we begin to pick up leaks or other defects, it's really difficult to parse where the responsibility lies. Is it, was it a manufacturing defect? Was it the solar installer who was the beneficiary in some aspect of their work? Did the cities share in some way in, you know, in causing this sort of problem? So one of the realities in Annapolis is that we have fairly close to our water plant, where the old landfill is, a 12-megawatt solar farm, of which the city can, is entitled to use four megawatts of those. Six megawatts goes to Anaronda County and two to the school district. Now, of the four megawatts, that's four million watts, given that we are in Maryland and our solar capacity factor is about 17%. I'll explain what that is, that if we're on the western part of the United States, the solar incidence is greater. And you have solar cells, they capture more. So if you're in Arizona or California or any of those western states, New Mexico, your solar capacity factor is higher. In Maryland, it's around 17%. Where on the east coast, it's somewhere around there. So we have about 8,760 hours a year that are in a year. And with 17%, that gives us about just shy of 1,500 solar megawatt hours per year that are sort of generated from those cells. That, now, with our use, that's per megawatt hour. We have four megawatt hours, that's close to 6,000 megawatt hours per year that the city has access to. That's 6 million kilowatt hours per year. Our facility is an industrial class facility, probably use somewhere around 25 kilowatt hours per square foot. We have about 20, the building is around, buildings are around 26,000 square feet. So that's around six, a little over 600,000 kilowatt hours per year that the building would use at most. And it is a modern building with a lot of, I'm being very conservative in my calculations. And the architects are working hard to make sure that a lot of energy efficient components are in the building. So my numbers will probably be on the high side. So you can see basic from my very rough calculations that we are significantly below our generation capacity of the solar farm. And what we are committing to do is to offset what we cannot build, what we're reluctant to build on site with the use of the solar energy, the green energy from that solar farm. And if there is, this is also used to power other city buildings. So in our analysis, if we find that we are deficient, we will purchase, we will make up the difference from a purchase from the Baltimore Regional Co-op Purchasing Committee, which has a green energy component, which we would, they're doing a solar RFP. I was just speaking with our purchasing agent this afternoon. He told me that there will be floating an RFP shortly. And we would make up the difference if necessary from that. So our facility would actually effectively be purchased, run entirely from green energy. And I think that is a better solution for not only the reasons I mentioned, but also the technology of solar is growing at an alarming rate or, you know, a very quick rate. And if you sort of lock yourself into a certain generation of panels, you may find that, you know, you get diminishing returns over time that are not really justified. I think that we can achieve the same end through this mechanism that I mentioned. I think that, you know, that's the part that I want with research and would be, you know, glad to speak on. And, you know, it's sort of turned over to Leo to speak on some of the other aspects that were raised.
Michael, thank you. So we did some research on our side and, you know, DPW's been homeless for a long time. And so we've been moving as quickly as we can through the design process. When you work with pre-engineered metal building companies, you need to commit early to the design and the configuration of the steel components that they fabricate and ship to the site. And so we made those commitments with our partners, BGC, a couple of months back now. And so the good news is, you know, it's moving forward and we're ready to go. But steel prices have gone through the roof over the last several months and wood framing as well. But, so if we wanted to add the capacity to take the additional five to seven pounds per square foot on the roof, the increase in costs was about $160,000. And that's just for the re-engineered roof members. And to go back in line is to where we would purchase the building. And so that's one cost. And then the other is to upsize the steel, which they haven't given us a number for how much more the steel is because there's more, you buy it by weight essentially. So could we do it physically? Yeah, so we could do it. And this is what I spoke to you last time. You know, it's, it would be hard to do because we'd have to go back through that design process with them and move back to the back of the queue. And there would be a substantial cost to the city. And so when you think about that against the buyback period for, you know, those kinds of numbers, it starts to make less and less sense. So that's what we can add to the discussion.
Leo, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Do you think that, this is Diane Butler, do you think that going forward, you might be able to put into the design standards of things that you're working on, the capacity to allow solar in the future? So that this doesn't, you know, we don't have the situation next time? Because this seems like a pretty important thing that we should be looking forward to in the future.
Sure, we could do that. I mean, I think it's, you know, these things are all about economy. And so the pre-engineered metal building folks have figured out how to, you know, whittle down the excess capacity of these buildings to, you know, relatively modest margin. And so that's how come they're so cost competitive. If the directive from the city comes back and says, you know, we'd like to make sure that this is something that we're accommodating on all of our buildings moving forward, that's certainly something that we could put into the design kind of, you know, the list of program requirements and make sure that there's additional capacity beyond snow and wind loads to accommodate the additional weight of the panels, assuming that panels stay the same weight and don't get lighter, which I think they will. But yeah, we could do that.
That would be great. So do we technically have to do something so that does get included in all future site design standards?
I think what would happen is, you know, when Brian Snyder writes the RFPs for these projects and distributes them to people to provide, you know, the proposal back, we would have to go ahead and ask him to put in there that we provide that capacity as part of a design request.
So we can't just standardize it somehow? Like if there's wind and snow measurements that you do from an engineering perspective, we can't also say, use the boat, you know, a standard solar panel that's, you know, in use at the time the design is being developed?
Well, you could. You could try and do that through a legislative process, right? And write it in, just like the city did with the lead requirements for the buildings to achieve silver, the ones that they're doing. You could go back into that same section and say, in addition to achieving lead silver, we'd also want to achieve, you know, the ability to put solar panels on the roofs of the buildings.
Perfect, thank you. That's very helpful, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Mr. Johnson, thank you very much. I really learned from you and Mr. Wilson also. Clearly, both of you have really done some fine work here. And it really shows. And it's, your responses have been very thoughtful and informative. And I, for one, very much appreciate it. But let me, let me just ask some questions, some details here. Is it, to summarize what you said, is it that this facility shall consume energy produced from the city's allocation of energy from the Waterworks Solar Farm? Is that what it's called?
I may have the name incorrect. It was, it's, it was built on the farmland, the abandoned landfill. I'm not sure, Betsy is on, Betsy, do you know if that's the correct name? Waterworks Solar Farm?
I don't, I'm sorry.
You don't? Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm not sure what the exact name is, but it is the solar field that is adjacent to our water plant.
Okay. And, and, and did I understand you correctly that you would, your proposal is to consume energy from the city's allocation of energy produced there to the extent possible? And then thereafter, if it becomes impossible because the city's using it elsewhere, I assume, that you would purchase energy from the, what was it called? The Baltimore Regional?
Baltimore Regional Cooperative Purchasing Committee. It's, BrickPac, BrickPac is the acronym, but it's Baltimore Regional Cooperative Purchasing Committee.
Okay. Okay. So let me read it back to you one more time. This facility shall consume energy from the city's allocation of solar energy produced at the Waterworks Solar Energy Facility, right? To the extent possible. And from the Baltimore Regional Cooperative Purchasing Committee if necessary.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, fine. Can you live with that condition if it's attached to an approval?
We can, definitely, yes.
All right. That sounds very good. As I said, I, once again, thank you. Thank you. It's been a pleasure listening to you.
You're welcome.
Is anybody, any other questions from the commission?
Yep.
There, since there have been no public, additional public comment submitted, I will close the public hearing. And I believe that the written submissions were introduced into evidence last time and should become a part of this, part of the record. Is there any, as we move on to a vote for approval or disapproval, is there any discussion?
You want to have a motion for approval that we'll discuss?
That's fine with me. You can, we can proceed that way. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that, that we approve with the condition that you mentioned earlier.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Just to make clear, and I will provide this in writing to Ms. Hook later. We'll add a condition, I don't know the number. This facility shall consume energy from the city's allocation of solar energy produced from the Waterworks Solar Farm to the extent possible and from the, and then from the Baltimore Regional Cooperative Purchasing Committee if necessary. That's the additional condition. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Sure, I'll discuss that. Do we have a comparison of cost rate between buying from the grid regularly and then buying from smart energy like that? Do we have a cost comparison?
If I'm, I don't have a cost comparison between what the Baltimore Regional Cooperative Purchasing Committee's price would be. Is that, is that what you're asking? What you're asking?
I am, because I know for a fact, for me, for my home, we can choose our energy source in Maryland, whether it's BG&E or some other supplier. And if we choose green energy, it's usually significantly higher. But it is subsidized by the state, which is fantastic. So there's gonna be an increased price for you. And I know when we talked about having concrete versus asphalt, trying to make it more green, more lead, costs seem to be an issue there. So I'm just wondering if you can accommodate that? I mean, I'm all for solar and everything else.
You know, it could be higher. Okay, I understand your question. It could be higher. And the Baltimore Regional Cooperative Purchasing Committee has not received their, they're just issuing, haven't issued their RFP yet, so I don't quite know what their rates would be. It's, there's a possibility that it could be higher, but this committee is a large purchasing block. So they may have buyer advantage in a sense. So we would have to wait and see. But regardless, I, I think that this would, this fallback is, would not really be necessary given the generation capacity of the plant and, you know, the energy efficient nature of the building that we are using. We're not particularly large, 26,000 square feet. We're not going to be a major energy hog, like a building built in the 70s or somewhere thereabouts.
Okay.
So, I mean, even if we do pay a bit more, we, you know, that's what we're prepared to do to satisfy the condition.
So you can accommodate that increase? Also, on another item, the city's in the process of suing 26 or so major oil companies for global warming. Yet we're gonna go and pave a huge area with asphalt and we're still gonna be using fuel in our trucks and whatnot. And in trying to preserve the city's background, and help me out here, Bob, you're a lawyer. I don't want to ruin our case. If the city's going to sue the 26 oil companies, are we ruining our case by then now approving and then going and building a building that's gonna require a huge asphalt area, which comes from, is a byproduct usually of petroleum processes?
Well, I can't speak to the point of whether it would affect our stand, our, not our standing in the case, but how well our case may look. But I would recall the testimony from the last hearing, the time we met, which was that the production of concrete is much more energy intensive than the production of asphalt.
That's what, that's what, I remember that testimony. And I just wanna, I just wanna make sure we're looking at this project. We didn't even mention, maybe we didn't really, some of us didn't know about the court case. I guess the case going forward or the act going forward. So I just wanna make sure whatever we do here is not gonna be with, without respect to that. And we're taking that into consideration. I don't want, if the mayor is choosing with the legal department to sue these oil companies and get the city a ton of money to rebuild downtown and make us more resilient, I mean, how do we protect ourselves from hosing ourselves, you know, in a case by doing anything here with our own huge building we're building? So I just want to put that out there, everyone, and sure, we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's before we proceed forward. Has anybody from the Department of Public Works, have you been approached by the mayor's staff or legal about this? And even considered this, that aspect?
I'm not sure that on an active case of the cities involved in, that I should give any opinion on the matter, official opinion on it. I mean, I don't have any legal qualifications and, you know, I, I really not sure that I should give an opinion on the matter. I mean, I just focus on the very narrator of public works or engineering and I leave the lawyers to...
Yeah, I know, it's, it's a stretch.
More beefy issues.
It's a stretch. So, I mean, we're doing our thing, but I don't know how, does anybody know how would we leverage the two? So throwing it out there as for consideration. We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna sue the oil companies, yet we're gonna go ask them for asphalt to pave a huge parking lot and everywhere else. And we're also gonna have trucks that are, maybe we're not gonna have enough charging station or anything else. Maybe it's just a sign of the times. We can't possibly pull ourselves away from it, but just a thought. But thanks for the, the purchase of energy. So it seems like we can accommodate that, the price, the pricing and everything else. So it shouldn't be a problem. the price, the pricing and everything else. So it shouldn't be a problem. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
I may recall a comment, um, by Mr. Wilson last time, which was that apparently the infrastructure for more charging stations will be installed, even if the stations are not installed at this time. It, was that a correct understanding of mine?
Uh, that is correct. And we also looked in a little bit further to the, um, to the capacity of the power that we have delivered to the site. And right now we've got, um, two charging stations included in the design and, um, but the site can actually accommodate six with the power that comes in right now. So, um, we're providing conduits to locations for the additional four points where we can charge. So whether we do them or not now, that's going to be, you know, up to the city as they move forward. But yes, we made accommodations in the design to include those elements since the last discussion we had with the planning commission.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, Leo. Um, so, but that's six charging stations. I thought we were talking about, you know, converting our fleet of vehicles in Annapolis. Do you think, um, I, I guess I was under the impression that this DPW building would accommodate, you know, the future of this fleet changeover to solar at some point? I don't think six charging station is even close to what that would take, or is it?
Well, I don't think it is either. I think, um, as the city decides to move towards, um, electric power for the trucks, we'd probably have to upgrade service through, uh, you know, um, an arrangement with BG&E to get additional power brought to the building. They're reluctant to do it, you know, preventatively because they have to figure out how to provide the power when there's demand for it. So we don't often find them telling us that if you're, you know, they want to know what our panels have on them right now. So they, when I do, like, we have a pre-design meeting with them and we talk about what we need. And, um, you know, they want to see exactly what's going to be connected there. So we could talk to them again about it and see if they want to help us with it. But, um, you know, it's.
No, that's helpful. I just, I missed, totally misunderstood that. We were saying, is it going to be, um, electrification ready for the imminent, or I shouldn't say imminent, it will happen at some point, it's probably not imminent, changeover to electric vehicles for at least a good portion of our fleet. And so I walked away thinking that the answer was yes, but it's clearly no. And we're not going to be necessarily proactive about it. We're going to just wait until the capacity is necessary and then try to upgrade. Correct?
I, I think, um, that, um, Commissioner Butler, I think that, um, there, there's, um, the technology for the fleet trucks, the dump trucks, um, is not, uh, where it needs to be yet in terms of reliability or consistent power for them to be, um, like a, a, a consistent platform or reliable platform, um, with an electric drive. So eventually the, the technology is moving in that direction. So as for, in our strategic plan internally, as we're beginning to discuss this and to prepare for the future, we do have a, a long-term, um, objective of, um, electrifying our fleet. And it would be a layered approach and one with, you know, the, 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 those trucks are the, are the workhorses of the system. And, uh, switch, a switch over from diesel, which is a reliable powertrain to electric, which is an untested powertrain, has to be, uh, done carefully, I would say, because the costs of those units are very high. And, um, if they fail, the, it could have, uh, you know, serious effects on our operational capability. So our plan is really to use this facility and, and to build in, um, room for expansion with the fully well-understanding that, you know, X years down the road, I can't say exactly when, the infrastructure will be in place, the technology, the drive trains will be in place. Um, and we can convert to a, a largely or all-electric, um, uh, fleet. But we're not, we're not there yet. The technology isn't there yet. And it's something that we have to do carefully.
That just makes me, I'm curious about the, the, our fleet right now, not just the dump trucks, but the other vehicles, all the inspectors and all the other vehicles in our fleet for, well, even police and all that. Where are they getting, um, where do, where are they housed and where would they be charged if we went electric with them?
Well, well, they would charge, I mean, the, 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 um, the charging, the EV chargers can be located in, in a number of places and they're, you know, there, there's a bigger plan I was reading by some of the utilities to have, um, on-street charging and, and parking lot charging. So there, I think that, um, a lot of this, uh, would, came out of a settlement that I think Volkswagen had. And that sort of, you know, was a seed that, um, that sort of, um, is, is nudging the, the country in this direction, along with the federal policy, current federal policy. So I, I don't think that the, there's a paucity of chargers or charging stations. Uh, it may be a question as to whether they're level two, which are reasonably fast, or level three, which are super fast. And, uh, for the, I would suspect that for the dump trucks, which are, um, which could charge overnight, that level two stations, um, would probably suffice. They would, they would be plugged in and, and could charge. And we would have adequate numbers to accommodate the, um, electric fleet that we have. Because as I mentioned, those are the workhorses of our operation. Uh, probably works, doesn't work unless our dump trucks and other heavy vehicles are, are using.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
So if we were to summarize and put that into our minutes, the, the answer is we have six, potentially up to six charging stations now. And maybe in the future, we will convert and have more ability to charge our additional.
We will. I, I would, I would, um, ask that, that a number not be put in because fleet sizes can vary. And we, that's something that we would, you know, we, the number of pieces that we have or that we would convert is a, is an operational decision, um, that we have to, we have not really, uh, studied closely enough to sort of make them, to determine what the correct number is.
But what we're approving today is up to, like, if there's four that will happen when this is built, but it has the ability, uh, the building has the ability to charge six. There'll be six charging stations. It's capable of, right, you know, in the near future. I just want to put, make sure that we are, know what we're approving. And I think I heard Leo right, but if that's wrong, just let, you know, correct that so we can get it right.
Yeah. So that's what's in the design right now.
Perfect. Thanks.
Any further question or comment? I call for the vote. All in favor of, uh, approving this, uh, application with the additional condition? Please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any negatives?
In aye.
One nay. Any abstentions? None. Um, with that, um, um, with that approval, um, I, I would like to say that I, I, once again, I found your answers to be really informative and responsive. And, uh, coming on top of a lot of work in the city towards, uh, as Ms. Butler points out, towards the future that, that we can now begin to foresee if we can't react to it as fast as we might like to. Thank you very much. Um, I hope that the traffic intersection at West Street and the outlet there is going to be worked on. Uh, I wish you all the best of luck in dealing with the state highway administration. You're going to need it.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate it.
Have a good night, sirs.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. I'm going to turn the chair, the gavel back over to Mr. Sale.
Oh, I was enjoying you having it. That was nice. All right. We'll go ahead and share the agenda and get back to that again. Hopefully it doesn't crash. I had way too many windows open trying to be well-prepared for the meeting in order, uh, and evidence became unprepared, uh, by crashing. All right. Looking back at the agenda, we have completed item number one. Thank you very much to the Mr. Chairman Waldman at the chance there. And going on to item number two, major site, uh, design plan review application by 100 Ridgely Avenue. We heard this, uh, at the last meeting. So now this is follow-up. And we're continuing the public hearing and over to city staff, uh, for any changes and updates. And also if they've received any additional, uh, comments that they'd like to point our attention to, to then present, ask the, and then after that, we'll ask the, the applicant if they have any changes and then go into further public comment. So over to staff.
Hey, hello, Mr. Chair, Kevin Scott. And, uh, no, there's been no additional public comments or any additional information from the applicant since March 4th.
Okay. And the information prior to that?
Everything that, um, you've already entered into the record, the staff report, the application. There was a public comment from Trudy McFall.
Yep.
There was a positive comment we talked about. And then the comment letter from the Annapolis Environmental Commission that was also talked about last time. Uh, there's been no other information provided.
Thank you for that quick review for the public. I always like to bring that up so the public can, uh, remind if, or if they weren't present the last meeting, they can understand what we went through. Uh, and yes, Ms. Trudy McFall's, uh, comments were positive for the project. And it was also noted that that's hard to come by. So thank you for everyone for that. And thank you, Ms. McFall. Uh, over to the applicant, if they want to add any additional comments?
Um, Mr. Chairman, as far as I'm aware, this is Steve and I, the applicant. I, I don't believe we have anything. We're just happy to answer any questions. Our whole team is here, um, if the Commissioners have any.
Okay. Over to the commission for open question time.
I was just wondering if, uh, you guys happened to take my suggestion about having a wash station seriously or?
So I, I can talk to that. Um, we went back and looked at the plans again. And, um, the way that the units are configured, each one has a backyard and there's a, there's a retaining wall that's, um, got enough size on it, the whole brackets to put, um, if you had your bike and you wanted to wash it, you could put it on a bracket on the wall. And each unit has a hose bib in the back in the, in the plumbing plant. So, um, rather than have a group one in the back, if it was a bigger building, like an apartment building, we would, um, propose, um, a single station where people could come and wash in the garage or what, whatnot. But in this case, we're able to accommodate it in each one of the units independently. So, so that's what we're planning.
Yep. That's fair enough. Thanks.
I have a quick question. It's going to, uh, sound just like the last one, but, um, we talked a little bit about, um, having the ability to have charging stations at this location, 100 Ridgely Avenue. And I, you know, I wrote in my notes, question mark. So I know we discussed it, but I couldn't remember whether there will be the ability to include a charging station.
Do you want to talk about that, EJ, or you want me to talk about that?
Yeah, I, I think it's a good comment, Diane. Um, I, I think that we'll, we'll make a decision once we have a better understanding of the scope and complexity and sort of overall cost of the project. But we'll, we'll most likely put one in, um, because I, I do think that it'll make the, the units more attractive from a commercial viability standpoint. So, um, we don't have an answer yet, but we'll, we'll most likely put, put one or two in.
Great. And actually, EJ, thanks. I thought one, my question was, even if you don't put one in, will it be, will it, there be the capacity to do it later? Because I know sometimes a design, it doesn't anticipate a charging station, station can become really fundamentally almost impossible to add the EV charging station later. So even if you can't afford to do it right now, if it's at least thought about and can be incorporated later, that's almost good enough in my book.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely make sure we plan out so we can put them in, um, if we decide to do so down the road. That's, that's a good point.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Mr. Rumpke.
Hold on, Leo, could you, could you share the, a picture of the development while we're talking here? So anybody in the public knows what we're talking about. Get a nice rendering of it displayed, Leo. Thank you.
Sure.
Over to you, Ms. Wolf.
And Mr. Rumpke. Um, each of these units will have an individual electric meter. Is that right?
That's correct. That's how we're designing it.
Will there be, pardon me, will there be one, uh, sort of, one meter for the building as a whole?
Um, there most likely, likely will be. If we have some exterior lights on the building, we'll probably need to have, um, a, I guess a fifth BG&E meter for a public area. So we, we would most likely tie out the, I think I know where your question's going, but on the charging side, um, that's what a public meter. And then there, there are different systems and ways that you can kind of allocate out usage for those. So we would, um, we would figure that out.
Um, as Ms. Butler points out, it's indescribably cheaper to do it now rather than later. Is that correct?
Um, I don't, I don't know this, uh, it, it could be. I, I don't know the specific answer on that.
Mr. Wilson, you have any observation?
Sure. So, um, we've got a parking lot that's directly adjacent to the building. And so I think the, um, the process would include making sure that the house panel, which most buildings do have when they're, when they're, um, configured the way the, this one is, um, there's individual panels for the units and there's a single panel for anything related to the, to the, um, shared use of you will. So we can take that panel and ensure that the size has the capacity to take the charger, which isn't very much for, for an automobile charger. You may see people with a cord that runs out from their house to charge their car at night. I know my neighbor has one. But what we could do is make sure there's a conduit from that panel to the parking area and just be ready to put the power, um, pole in place there or mount it to the building so that we can accommodate the, um, the charging station now in the future, depending on where the numbers come back. And that's not difficult to do. We can do that.
I'm, I'm with the rest of the, I think it's very important because I mean, who's going to move into this building? It's probably going to have, somebody's going to have a car that's going to need charging, at least two, two out of the four. So. And that's a nice rendered picture there. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else with comments from the planning commission from, since from the last meeting?
If there are, if there are no further comments, I'm prepared to make a motion.
It's a good idea.
All right. Um, I would move to approve with an additional condition. And that condition shall read that infrastructure with the capacity for at least two electric car charging stations shall be installed.
Can we get that up to four? Is that sensible to ask for four to make the capacity there? Because you'd have four parking spots right against that wall. You know what I mean?
Um.
I guess it kind of depends on what you mean by infrastructure.
Well, the way I, uh, uh, that's a good question. And the way I understand it is, um, as Mr. Wilson described it, which is that, uh, the, the house panel is large enough to, to, to handle the load. And then you put in the, um, conduit, um, as he spoke of with respect to the DPW building, you put in the conduit now and then later, when you, um, make that, uh, the economic decision that Mr. Rumpke pointed out, um, the infrastructure is there and it's decidedly cheaper to get it done. Um, I'm, I'm getting the impression that the tendency is that it is an attractive, um, uh, accessory, uh, to the, to this, uh, to this project. And I would like to just see that the infrastructure is there, um, so that the option is taken advantage of. Now that as to the number, um, Mr. Sale, you're absolutely right, um, that there are four parking spaces which are, um, directly adjacent to the building, um, which means that if they decided to go to eight there, or six, they could go. But, um, I would change my, my mind to, from two to four.
And especially if they're going to be powered from the panels of each unit. We're looking at the units right there. So.
Well, um, I think that that's a decision that perhaps the, you know, the, uh, the applicant could make. Um, he could designate parking spaces and that the, right, individual homeowners would be responsible for paying for their own cars and that sort of thing. But I do think that however they decide to do it, I think that the infrastructure needs to be, and, and am I clear enough is with the word infrastructure? Is that so that that's understood? I mean, is there any other way of saying this that, 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 that makes it clear?
I think you specified it with the, the capacity of the house panel plus conduit. That, that's pretty specific.
Well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say house panel. I mean, I think that that's their decision. It may be that individual homes, uh, you know, are responsible for their own individual energy drain. But the infrastructure with the capacity for at least four electric car charging stations shall be installed.
I like that. I like that.
That's my motion.
Is that, and, and I'll ask Leo, does that make kind of sense?
It does. I think, um, I think, um, Bob's comments on. It does. I think Bob's comments on point, if we end up doing four, we might just run a conduit from each individual panel and that way you know, they can pay for their own car charging.
That's my thought, you know, and each one has their own spot. Because if we just did two, then it's which unit gets it. And then you have the other two residents saying, hey, can I borrow yours tonight and I'll get you a six pack? You know, that actually might turn out pretty well for who owns the two spots. Might be profitable. I want those units myself.
I don't see that as a problem. I think the wording sounded fine to me where the infrastructure to support charging of four is doable.
Yeah, and let's be honest, the new generation at electric cars, that is what's happening. So, nice one, Bob. I'm with you, Bob. I'll second your motion, Bob, with it as being four for the infrastructure. So that's a second. Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? From motion carries, recommend this approval with the four, with the addition of infrastructure for four charging stations, which leaves it open enough. Nice job.
Thank you as usual, Mr. Wilson and Mr. Rumpke. I don't believe it was as painful as you may have anticipated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Smile, please.
It was a good night.
Wilsonian period of architecture continues.
Thank you so much.
Stop the show on that, Leo. We can take that down. And Westonapolis will be forever changed. Okay, back to the share screen for the agenda. All right, hopefully everybody can see that. Moving on down to the bottom for we've completed item number two, public hearing, item number three, OTAC 50 dot 20. Moderately priced dwelling unit for the purpose of updating certain occupancy periods of MPDUs. This is carried over from the last meeting and over to staff for any changes or anything received.
Hello, no, no changes, no updates, no additional public comments.
Okay, we're really flying through this agenda. Fantastic. Nothing to change for MPDUs.
I do have a question. Maybe it's a little late, but I vaguely remember the discussion months ago on this. And I do remember those, those numbers for those years, but but looking at them again, they seem awfully long. Is this what's normal and across the region, across the state, across the country in terms of successful MPDU statutes?
About the term, it has to remain an MPDU?
Yeah.
Ten or what we're going to for thirty?
What we're going to here.
I think Montgomery County is thirty. Say again. I thought Montgomery County was thirty.
Montgomery County is thirty. You might remember this from a few months ago when the other half of this ordinance went through and that the point of that ordinance really was to change the lengths of the time periods. And that was to make our program more effective and make sure that that housing stock stays in the market for longer. And it is following best practices of other jurisdictions that have successful inclusionary zoning programs like Montgomery County.
Okay, you're refreshing my memory a little bit. Thanks.
And Sally, thank you because I think it's important to keep this housing stock as long as we can. You know, we are suffering from lack of affordable housing. So thirty years sounds reasonable to me. And I hope at the end of you know, at some point we can revisit it and maybe we can't make it an indefinite time period or infinite time, but I'd like to be able to keep some of these moderately priced dwelling units around for as long as possible. Thirty years is fine for now, but maybe we can extend that at some point. Just throwing it out there.
You can always do that. And hopefully we'll have some more units online in the near future.
So in essence, for the, in essence, for the public, a little rehash here, this will change the existing ten year requirement for MPDUs to, till they can go to market value for sale if someone owned them to being thirty years mandatory before they can sell.
And technically, that actually changed a few months ago, but this, this part of the code was inadvertently not changed when, when that change was made. So this ordinance really is cleanup to make sure the code is consistent with itself and what was passed a few months ago.
And it also negates the option for a developer to pay a fee in lieu. And paying a fee in lieu was the only way that the account would have been funded. So that account that went with the fee in lieu is probably going to go away once it drains out. Unless somebody figures out another way to fund that.
That's right.
And again, what was that account totally only used for?
It was previously only used for
Efforts to increase housing within the city, which I think was kind of broad based, but account is going away and it did support some items. So if anybody is looking for that, that will disappear. But you're going to get thirty years of an MPD vice ten, which is already in the code elsewhere evidently. Any other comments from commissioners or staffs?
Well, I think thirty years is kind of reasonable in the fact a lot of people get a mortgage for thirty years. Although we do have people, you know, moving around a lot more than they used to, but you know, still, if you do it in indefinite, then there, it really takes away a lot of the incentive of buying an MPDU in the first place. Selling them, I would think. Be doing indefinite number. So I think thirty years is good.
Okay, very fair statement. Any other discussion?
Mr. Iams, would you like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve this modification to oh, oh, five, oh, two, oh. I'll second it.
We have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously for oh dash fifty dash twenty moderately priced dwelling units for the purpose of updating certain occupancy periods of the MPDUs. Thank you very much, commissioners and staff. That went quite rapidly. And Mr. Waldman, you were right in your experience. We would get through all of this and able to accomplish much more this evening. Thank you for that guidance earlier. Yeah. Listen to your experience. Anyway, so moving on down to item number four. Oh, dash four, dash twenty-one, medical cannabis dispensaries for the purpose of line medical cannabis dispensaries in certain zoning districts within the city of Annapolis. Adding a definition. This item, we're going to hear the staff introduction of it tonight. And the commissioners can ask questions of the staff. We will follow that by the public hearing being opened and go over the items that we have. And the public hearing will remain open for another two weeks till our next meeting, where we will hear additional public comment. And then continue on with the item during that meeting as the priority item at the next meeting. So on to
There been, I forgot to, I might have missed it, but did you close the hearing on that?
We are, we're closed for the previous three hearings.
Okay. Okay, just want to make sure.
And I did not mention it specifically, but it's inferred upon the vote. Sorry.
Thank you.
All right, so on to the staff introduction and explanation on oh dash four dash twenty-one, medical cannabis dispensaries.
All right. Good evening. Sally Nash from Department of Planning and Zoning.
And feel free to share screen if you can. I'll stop my share.
Okay. Okay, I will later, after my presentation, I'll show the map.
Thank you.
So I'm here tonight to present ordinance oh four twenty-one for your recommendation to city council. This ordinance would allow the use medical cannabis dispensary throughout the city in the zoning districts that allow drugstores currently. So drugstores or pharmacies are considered a personal care establishment. So we use that zoning category to model which zoning districts this use would be appropriate for. We've put it in all of the commercial districts therefore, except for as a permitted use, except in the P district. It will be a special exception and in the C two P district, this use would not be permitted. And that is really due to the nature of those zoning districts that I'll touch on in a minute. The ordinance describes, defines medical cannabis dispensaries as an entity licensed under Maryland code. Health General Article Title thirteen, subtitle thirty-three, that acquires, possesses, processes, transfers, transport cells, distributes, dispenses, or administer cannabis products containing cannabis, related supplies, related products containing cannabis, including food, tinctures, aerosols, oils, or ointments, or educational materials for use by qualifying patient or caregiver. The city currently has no medical cannabis dispensaries in the city limits, although there is one right on the city county line off of West Street. Near Route two. I've shown in a map the commercial districts in the city in blue where this use would be permitted. The P district where it would be a special exception and the C two P district where it would not be allowed. This map is kind of hard to see on the staff report that I sent to you, so I also included a larger version in the package that I sent to you. And I'll show that in just a minute. So the P district is our professional office district and this district is really geared towards offices and office use only, not really any retail kind of uses, which is why this use would be a special exception. The C two P district is similar. It's a conservation professional office. It also is geared toward two offices and to buffer adjoining residential neighborhoods from commercial or other non-residential impacts. So it's supposed to be kind of a light impact for commercial districts. So the dispensaries would not be permitted in this district. There is one error in the ordinance that I just recently noticed that the use in PM two referring is permitted subject to standards. However, there are no standards proposed in the code. So that really should just be a P as well. And that is, there are also some amendments that are pending. Elder woman Pendell Charles might want to speak to those. She's looking at different distances. That might want, that should be included in the ordinance in order to make sure there aren't dispensaries close to one another. So to spread them out throughout the city. We're still tinkering with the exact distances. I sent you a map the, the other day showing the existing dispensary on West Street along with a two mile radius and a mile and a half radius. You could get a sense of how that would restrict the location of the dispensaries. And that concludes my presentation unless there are any questions from the commission.
Would you show the zoning map first?
Yeah, we definitely need to have the map up there for this brief to give the public a better idea of where the possibilities are. And is there, there's no limitations in this for distance from schools or public recreation areas or anything like that, is there? I couldn't find it. So yeah, we'll give you a minute, Sally. Take your time to get a map up there and we'll go ahead and talk amongst ourselves as commissioners for this item. And then after that, we will, when we go into public testimony, we'll bring the council members forward for that. Actually, we could, since the item is presented by staff, is there any other staff members that need to talk on this, Sally, or is it just going to be you?
Just me.
Okay. And you're still looking for that map?
Just be a minute while I pull it up.
Okay, take a minute to get that.
You could, if you want to move to the alderman, you could do that.
Yeah, okay. If you're going to do that, well, we should start, well, first commissioners. While Sally's looking that up, we can get back to Sally with other questions, but in some time or efficiency, maybe we could just go ahead with the alderman that are sponsoring the package. I believe the package is sponsored by the mayor, Alderman Gay and Alderman Arnett. So we would go to them. So first commissioners, any comments before we proceed to them? Okay, well then we'll go first to the first name on the package submission. Mr. Gay, would you like to speak towards the legislation?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you guys hearing this. And I can, my apologies for the confusion via email. When they said closer to nine, I thought they meant closer to April the ninth, not this, that's why I thought it was being postponed. So my apologies for that. But just a quick question, really, more than any support behind the legislation. Is this the map that includes the state limits of one mile per dispensary?
The state legislation defers to local zoning requirements.
Yeah, and so if we were to, to help with the issue that older women Pendell Charles you know, has with the dispensaries being in, within a certain proximity of one another. If we were so, or would it be to your advice in that we amend the language of the actual ordinance to include the state's descriptions and requirements, because to the point of the commissioner, there are a certain number of requirements that the state has. For example, you can't have paraphernalia in the window. You can't have paraphernalia advertised on billboards. They have to be a mile apart. And I thought they had created a you know, I thought that was perfect for us, you know, because anything over a mile, a mile and a half, we're literally limited to one dispensary in the city. Just, you know, at least in my, you know, just trying to measure things out.
Alderman Gay, have you seen the planning and zoning GIS map showing two miles and circles and mile and a half circles? You're muted, sir.
I have not. Was that attached in the granticus or is that a new document?
It was a new document, just came that Dr. Nash just sent out, I don't know, a couple of days ago. And I think that we'll be able to see it shortly in just a couple of minutes. But it's pretty revealing. What's not on there, what wasn't done on those series of maps was the one mile radius. But maybe we can sort of interpolate from what Sally will show us in a minute. So Dr. Nash, the blue is what?
Blue are the commercial zoning districts where this would be permitted.
And what's the purple? Or lilac or whatever that reddish color.
The red are the P districts where it would be a special exception.
And, and the yellow districts?
Where it would not be permitted. Along with the gray areas. But the gray areas are residential areas.
Okay.
If I could, I think that what is of importance to me is that we minimalize the effects that this legislation would have on Ward three. Because I realize that's important to the constituency there. And so that's why I think that the, yeah, to the point that Mr. Waldman made, maybe the radius maps would be helpful and just see, because when I, I just typed in an address, I just did Main Street to the Eastport shopping center, just using that as an example. If you were to put a dispensary on Main Street and then tried to add one in the Eastport Shopping Center, according to the amendment, one point five miles, you just wouldn't be able to do that. It would, it would, it would limit them significantly.
Can I ask just sort of a
Can I ask just sort of a procedural question here to Dr. Nash? So we have the legislation as proposed and we're being asked to look at that as proposed. With this amendment, it was added by Alderman Pendell Charles, is that something that, you know, we should comment on necessarily? Or, or, you know, is that something typical? I mean, typically we don't see amendments. Those kinds of things happen downstream from us. It's a little awkward that we, you know, there's already an amendment there. So should we take that into effect?
Let me clarify, it is a proposed amendment, so it is not a formal amendment, has not been accepted by city council. So I think it is up to you as a body to decide how you want to address it, if at all. You could, you really are making recommendation on the ordinance as originally drafted. And then if any amendments that you're interested in putting forward.
Okay, that's what I wanted to get some clarification on. Anyway, when, when, when people have had a chance to comment, I had some comments about this, but I'll, I'll wait to my turn.
Or amendment, or possible amendments that we think, we don't think highly of. I mean, we can comment widely on this piece of legislation, I would, given the information that's being presented here.
This is the map showing the farthest distance from in Ward one to the farthest point in Ward eight is 1.92 miles. So the question was, if the radius was two miles, could you have a dispensary in Ward one and in Ward eight? So the answer is no.
Is there any other person that's a sponsor of the legislation that wants to talk right now and give us more information before we start really debating back as a commission? Or is it just you, Mr. Gay? Is that it?
Yeah, I think I may be the only one present. And so before you go into deliberation, do you want the spiel? Or I really don't, you know, just, I wasn't sure if it was appropriate to kind of pitch the legislation to the body. Because I wasn't sure if that was into the consideration. Or are you just taking into consideration the planning effects that this legislation would have?
We were taking into consideration the effects it's going to have on what we're responsible for, which is the zoning uses. And this is really, it's going to be a change to uses in a zone. So that's what we worried about. And since it's your legislation, normally we would have aldermen that are sponsoring it, talk to us and say whatever they want about the legislation. So you can pitch it if you want, you can describe.
Just so you know, Alderman Pendell Charles has joined us as well.
Okay, thank you very much. But so Mr. Gay, if you'd like to finish with whatever else you'd like to add. Give us everything you have.
I will do so. So the reason that I put this legislation together is, so I broke it down into three things. The first being the opioid issue that we have in the city of Annapolis with 123% increase since the beginning of the pandemic, which was a year ago on the 13th. And so part of that is just, one, the accessibility. Two opioids and two is just the pain management style that we've taken in accustomed here in the United States. And so I think broadening that scope and including medical marijuana would just, you know, it would prove significant in helping us combat the opioid crisis. And there are statistics that back cases like this. I think that the medical approach is best because it is regulated by the state. And so there would be certain levels of protection for our citizens. I think number two, I looked at it as an economic, you know, point, I think it'd be great for jobs in the city of Annapolis. Varying on how many dispensaries we create, actually, actually create jobs starting at anywhere between $15 and $20 an hour. And that includes just the in-store business. This doesn't talk about the actual production and cultivation of the product and all that takes, it takes to actually get it in the stores. So I thought that it'd be, you know, timely, just when a time where we're looking at ways to create new jobs in our city and broaden the economic base. And then lastly, I thought it was important, just because we are in the year 2021 where, you know, in certain states, it is recreationally passed and you are able to sell it in stores and on the corners. But we still have so many members of our minority and African American communities serving time for simple possession or distribution of this drug. And I think that there have been a number of cases, for example, in cities like Oakland, where they've successfully, successfully passed legislation to allow for medical marijuana dispensaries. And then they went back and passed moratoriums and put in place measures so that the first or the second dispensary in the city has to be owned by a co-op that is impacted or that has residents impacted by the judicial system for nonviolent drug offenses. So I think just looking at it across those three lanes, we could create special opportunities for the city here. One, helping reduce our opioid epidemic. Two, creating jobs and contributing necessary revenue to the city. Revenue on fees for storage, cultivation, the sale of, just all of those things we could take advantage of. And then obviously, lastly, as I mentioned, just the disproportionate effect it's had on African American communities. I think this is a great start for us to kind of just, you know, combat those challenges.
Looking at the map. It, this is so.
Hold on a second, Bob. I was on mute there while I was trying to talk. Thank you, Mr. Gay, for that. And then going in order, I just want to remind everybody how we're going to proceed here is we'll let the, we had staff present, staff still presenting. We have the supporters, the sponsors of legislation, Mr. Gay, the mayor and Mr. Arnett. They will state their case and give us more information on the legislation. And then we'll open up public comment and then hear the other council members that were not listed on the legislation as under the public comment section. So Ms. Charles and I believe Ms. Tierney on board, we'll get to you in a minute. But back to you, Mr. Waldman, as a commissioner asking a question. Thank you.
Okay, I'm having problems putting together the zoning map with these circles, Venn diagrams. This, is this, Dr. Nash, is this the one mile circle map?
This is 1.5 miles.
One and a half miles. So nothing would be permitted in Ward three. What commercial areas in Ward four, if any, would would one, would a dispensary be permitted?
Right around Forest Drive.
And also, can we say for the public what the one and a half miles is significant for?
It, it's just an idea of how to make sure the dispensaries don't get all clustered together.
But it's not currently in state law or it's, and it's not currently in the legislation proposed, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So when you say Forest Drive, you mean Forest Drive and say Tyler?
Yes, let's see. So it would be Forest Drive near, near Spa.
Forest Drive near Spa and then.
Here's a zoning map and with the wards. I don't know if this is helpful or not. Let me turn off the zoning. So Ward three, Ward four, here's Forest Drive.
Yes.
Here's Hilltop. So it would be in that area. Here's the middle school. This triangle that will help orient you.
Okay, and that would be outside of the, let's call it the dispenser, the existing dispensary circle?
Yes.
Okay, and then you would draw a line, one mile, one and a half miles or two miles, depending on what's decided. And then you would move into what would, what's the next commercial area where things might be? Let's say under this map, the one and a half mile map, where else would one, would a dispensary be permitted? Because then you'd have to draw a circle from that intersection, Spa Road and Forest.
Right. So really, given the location of the existing dispensary, that's our, that's the only data point we have right now. So that means we'd be looking at Westonapolis could have one. It would be 1.5 miles away. Downtown is 1.5 miles away, Eastport. And then along Forest Drive after you get past Bywater, let's say. You could have them along Forest Drive.
But if somebody put one in at Spa and Forest, then it would push things, it pushed that circle, it would have to be one and a half miles from that dispensary as well, correct?
Right. If someone put one here, let's say right in the middle of Ward five, then, then that means the only other place you could have one is maybe Westonapolis. But no, nowhere else in the city. So we're looking at maybe two in the city with the 1.5 mile radius restriction.
Did you do a circle map at one mile?
No.
And if somebody put one in Ward eight, then that might cancel out anything in Ward three. Is that, that's how it would work?
If there was one in Ward eight, sort of in, you know, right in the middle of Ward eight, you could still probably have one in Ward two. Probably have one in Ward five or six. But you, that's it. You know, it all depends on where the first one goes.
Right.
Any other comments by commissioners on the proposed, I call it the Mickey Mouse drawing there. It looks like Mickey Mouse. For the one and a half mile, looks, this is the amendment possibility that they may look at for a minute. Just an idea that someone, that was gathered by comment for one and a half mile radius from, if any dispensary is made in the city, then they would have to have a mile and a half between it and the next one that could be built.
So I have one, one comment on this idea of a mileage, you know, a distance between possible dispensaries. To me, that sets up some really wacky perverse incentives, like, I don't want it in my neighborhood. So I'm gonna get somebody to build it in your neighborhoods, then it can't be in my neighborhood. I mean, it just, it's, you gotta sort of think through those scenarios. So I'm not saying it's a good idea, a bad idea. I just, you never, when you come up with rules like this, you never really know what's going to happen. So that's, I have some bigger general questions and I don't know if we're at that point yet.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Blind. And also from the staff, to get more info out for the public who's watching right now. What is the existing limitation by the state or the county for the number of dispensaries within the county? And why there's only one right on the county line with the city?
The county has a lot of restrictions based on locations to schools and other distances. There's only one allowed in east of Route two and south of 50. So, you know, that's how we have this one on the border here. The, the regulations of licenses is pretty strict. It's my understanding that they've given out all of the licenses. But I, the marijuana regulations are fairly complicated. But the state law does defer to local zoning. So we would need to make sure whatever restrictions we want are in our local code.
And you're, and you're going right where I want you to go with that is so if, if this legislation went through, it then supersedes state and county legislation for, for the location and distance to schools and everything else and the number we can have in the city. Is that correct?
Right. We wouldn't be subject to the county restrictions. We would be subject to the state, but the state specifically defers to local zoning.
Okay, so I want to make that widely known to everyone here. So if this legislation as written was passed, then in essence, what it's written in becomes the new guiding force for where dispensary would be located. Because it would override anything from the county and the state law refers back to local jurisdiction. So in essence, it becomes the overarching defining document. And anyone in the legal team, please let me know if that's incorrect. That's the way I understand it. And Dr. Nash, was that said correctly?
Well, partially.
Partially? Go ahead.
Partially. Because what, all of the state regulations as to who owns them and how they have to account for their product and their income and who, you know, who they're letting into their shop and payments and all of that. All of that would remain in place. The only thing that the state grants to the localities is the zoning, is the location of things. So they defer only with respect to that. But all the, if I want to open a dispensary in the Eastport Shopping Center, I would still be subject to state regulations as to who owns it, percentages of ownership and, you know, my bookkeeping and so forth. Okay?
But the state's not going to regulate distance from other zones or schools or things.
Not if we, not if legislation is passed. Not if local legislation.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I'd kind of like to understand that more because I would find it hard to believe that we could, a local ordinance could override the state on something like distance to schools. That might be something that's considered more restrictive and we can't do something that's less restrictive than what the state requires. So I think.
They have deferred to localities with respect to zoning and that's what the county did. The county said certain distance from cemeteries and schools and bus, whatever they said. So the state, the state defers only with respect to the location of dispensaries. And if this, and if the locality doesn't do anything about location, state law is a mile. So what they're, what's being proposed here is that we allow dispensaries. If we don't do anything else with respect to distances, well, we got the state rule, which is a mile. And what, what apparently proposed amendments and, 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 you know, proposed amendments would be one and a half to two miles from, from what I don't know. But still, I would have to apply for a license from the state.
Sure. I just want to make sure that, that we consider things like location in proximity to schools and things like that. I think it's going to be important to include that if it's not in current ordinance. That, that is, I, I think that would, older woman Pendell Charles would be interested in that idea. I think she is looking at schools as well. And I think she's asked our GIS department to prepare a map showing schools. There also is a limit on the number of dispensaries per senatorial district. You can only have two per state senatorial district. And so that means there's only one more available in Annapolis.
Oh. But now this is show off from office law. Does that then mean that any discussion potentially of any circles may be null and void? Because we had just one state congressional district?
Well, I think, I know, they could change the law, they could change that. But for now, yes.
Mr. Gay, does you have something you wanted to add? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much. I would just say that you would also have to take into consideration for what Sally just mentioned. One for Senatorial District, the census and the redistricting. And to the point though of the of the school districts and to the point that Commissioner Waldman was making, we would only be given the authority to decide the distance amongst, the distance of dispensaries amongst one another. There, we would still be subject to, as this is written. um, rules as it relates to this, uh, regulations in, in distance to schools. Regulations as it relates to advertisement, as it relates to admission into the dispensary. So all of those would still be in place. Uh, the only rule that the council is even considering changing from the state, um, legislation is the distance within. I, I just wanted to clarify so that there wouldn't be a belief that, you know. So when we, when I, actually, when we wrote this, I called up the, um, uh, uh, the ca- Alderwoman from Frederick City in Maryland, and we copied almost verbatim the language that they had written. And their goal was to allow anywhere a single standing pharmacy is allowed. To again, fight the opioid dispensary. And so pharmacies are next to our schools, so dispensaries should be next to our schools, that's the thought that they had, uh, taken into consideration. As we were, I mean, this is literally an effort to, you know, fight wrongs, not to just have weed in the streets, but we're trying to provide critical resources to those in need. Um, and so I would just take that into consideration when we talk about the mileage. Um, and I think that the, to, to direct to Nash's point. Until the, uh, uh, I was about to say congressional, until the state, uh, uh, lines are redrawn, we, the city of Annapolis would only be allowed one dispensary. Um, and, and I don't see the, uh, senatorial lines being drawn so drastically different in this upcoming, um, uh, census process that we would be even allowed a second dispensary.
Okay, any other comments from the commissioners? Before we, and questions of staff before we proceed into public comment and start hearing from, uh, the other council members? Okay, so we've heard from staff, the presentation, we've also heard from the, uh, legislation supporters represented by Alderman Gay, uh, the mayor and Alderman Arnett, uh, which they're not commenting on, but Mr. Gay is for them. And now we'll move into public comments, so we'll open up the, uh, public hearing. Which will also, this public hearing will now remain open all the way until our second meeting two weeks from now, and possibly further if it takes long enough. Uh, and on first, uh, we have some people to testify, some council members, uh, so we'll start off with Alderwoman Charles, and we'll go to Alderman Tierney and any other older persons that we happen to have. So over to you, Ms. Pennell Charles.
Hi, thank you Chairman, um, and, uh, members of the, um, planning commission this evening. First of all, I, I, I'd like to give a little history about all of this. Um, my family's been in parole since the Civil War, I've been here for 66 years. And not in my entire lifetime have I ever seen residents as angry in Ward three, especially in parole about this legislation, I can truly say that. I'll put my hand on the Bible for that one. Uh, number two, as I've mentioned to many people over the years, out here in parole, we've got stuff that we didn't want and stuff we wanted, we couldn't get. One is the traffic signal, it took 20 years to get that traffic signal on Western Gibraltar. And that was a hard sell, but once we got everybody on board, uh, we were able to get it done. But if you look up and down Upper West Street, you can tell that there's something wrong. And my, uh, research, especially on the, um, 2009 comp plan. I looked at the 2009 comp plan, the Upper West Street Sector Study, and what jumped out at me was quite remarkable. In the 1989 comp plan, basically there were residences and in Ward three especially, that's have a lot of commercial and a lot of, um, industrial zoning, and that's what we did. If you take a closer look at the 2009 comp plan, it indicates that they were wrong. The 2000, the 1989 comp plan was wrong in the way that they looked at what they wanted to do. And as a result, the word that was used in that document in 2009 comp plan is that the residents are frightened, the word was used is frightened. And therefore you have a very large lack of trust in the parole and the Ward three community. When it comes to things that we want and we can't get, and things we've got, which are proliferation of what you see on Upper West Street. As to Alderman Gay's first argument about the opioid epidemic and how this would be helpful, I'm not gonna get into a back and forth argument. It's, uh, it could be argued on both sides, and I'll leave it at that. As for the economics and the jobs that, that are, um, might be available. We have 725 businesses approximately in Ward three. We have a lot of opportunities for jobs out here. In fact, I recently submitted something to Dr. Nash. And if you look at Ward three, it is truly Annapolis in miniature. There is, we can birth you here and we can bury you here, and we can do pretty much everything else in between. So as far as the economics and the jobs are concerned, um, we have quite a bit out here. Now, um, when it comes to, um, uh, the disproportionality as far as the op- uh, marijuana and that is concerned. As you know, parole is a historic African American community. No one knows the disproportionality any more than Ward three and the parole community. We are African American residents, and we are overwhelmingly over time have been that way. We have a, a great Hispanic population that has moved in, and we have an, a, a, a white population as well. So, no one can tell me that we don't understand the disproportionality on African Americans when it comes to cannabis or marijuana in our ward. Now, we've received a, a lot of letters in opposition from our community on this matter. In fact, today, this afternoon, I received a, a letter from Ward eight in opposition to that. And I did submit those to Dr. Nash as well as Ms. Rouse earlier today. Now, as far as the history, it was three to four years ago that the county, um, decided uh, to, on that very small, small plot of land, which is surrounded by Ward three in the city, on the Ward three parking lot, to place a dispensary there. Uh, the pastors, the residents were adamant, they were extremely angry, this has made them angrier, because now we're in the city. We, uh, made an argument, we used, uh, I filed a, a legal brief with the county. It included arguments about closeness to schools, residences, churches, a park. Um, this, uh, brief was very extensive, I did a lot of legal research on it. But yet and still the county decided that they would build that. And it's 666 feet from the Monarch Academy, which has approximately 600 students. So therefore, um, based on everything that I've said here, but I'm gonna also go back to the 2009 comp plan. And in that comp plan, there were two, um, components that they really, um, drilled down on, and there were two of the first. Preserve and enhance community character, which is the, the, the main one. And within chapter three is land use and economic development. I submitted, um, a, a document, uh, to our law department uh, outlining what my arguments were when it came to preserving, enhancing community character. We've had 15, at least 15, uh, significant projects, uh, brought before us in Ward three where we use those two elements, preserve and enhance community character as well as land use and ec- and economic development. We also have a 10-point plan, when we talk to developers, um, and the community engagement that we have with the Greater Parole Community Association as well as me, and Dr. Nash is very familiar with that 10-point um, uh, checklist that we go through before, um, we give a yay or a nay to those developers. And so the Greater Parole Community Association, and that association has been in existence since 1951. It was first called the Parole Improvement Association, but since has been incorporated and the name has changed. We have approximately 484 members. The, uh, community association weighs in on all of our developments, they weigh in on other, uh, matters. I had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago, we had 34 matters that we weighed in on, uh, that I bring to their attention. Last night, they had a community meeting, this was on their agenda. I was late to the meeting, but based on what I heard, the anger consists and persists. And so those are our arguments when it comes to, uh, any proposed dispensary. In fact, the residents have indicated they don't want any in the city. I, it indicated to them that I proposed the two mile limit, they are angry with me for even doing that. Uh, so the opioid epidemic is subject to debate. The economic and jobs, we have more businesses in Ward three than any other ward, we're Annapolis in miniature, we have approximately 725. We looked at the 2009 comp plan, the 1989 comp plan. Uh, our residents are mainly African American in Ward three, and they well know the disproportionality. We've received many letters in opposition, and the Greater Parole Community Association is still working on that. We were very adamant back two to three to four years ago with the county and the legal brief that I filed. And we received today a, a letter from Ward eight. Like I said, never in my wildest dreams or my lifetime have I ever seen residents as angry as I've seen regarding this dispensary. And the word, like I said, that was used, uh, in the night, in the 2009 comp plan as relates to the 1989 comp plan, is that that comp plan frightened, that's the word used, frightened residents. And so therefore, we have a trust issue. The Upper West Street Sector Study, um, which was something that we did back in 2016, um, pro- provided information as well about the residents and what they want as far as preserving and enhancing community character and land use and economic development. Thank you so much, are there any questions?
So it sounds as if Alderwoman Charles, that the principal feeling that I hear expressed is that Ward three does not want it in Ward three.
Ward three doesn't want it anywhere in Annapolis, but what I indicated to them was, um, while I may or may not be in agreement, I was willing to say, okay, let's look at the two mile radius and not make sure that it's not in Ward three. Like I said, one gentleman last night on the call said, he didn't, he didn't want it closer than five miles. But I indicated to the gentleman, you know, uh, that may not be what I necessarily want, or even my colleagues. But what I was willing to do is to propose the, uh, two mile radius uh, ensuring that it would not be anymore in Ward three. Like I said, the one that's in the county, that small plot of land, it's been county property for well over 60 years. It's sitting on the, um, Ward three parking lot, it's surrounded all four sides. About Ward three, I'm getting a lot of complaints, especially about people who frequent Walgreens. They go on Walgreens, there's no one in there, they come out, they have no parking spaces, and they're told by Walgreens that it's the people over at the cannabis dispensary that are using the parking spaces for Walgreens. So, th- there are a lot of things and what I, and what I've told developers and indicated to them over the years, I said, you can come in here and put things where you want them to go. But at the end of the day, we're the people that have to live with whatever you put here. You can go home to your nice warm beds and comfortable homes and, and forget all about us. But we're the ones that get the 12 o'clock midnight phone calls, the knocks on the door saying we need to fix this, and that's what has happened with that 89 comp plan. And that's what was stressed in the 2009 comp plan, that that was a mistake. And that the residents are now frightened because of what had happened.
So, the, the, the one, the dispensary on West Street seems to be very popular?
Obviously.
So what do we say to the people in the city of Annapolis who, who would want one more dispensary? A mile, a mile and a half, a mile and three quarters from the current dispensary? What do we say to them if it's been prohibited completely within the city of Annapolis?
Well, I'm not saying that's my, my take on it, I'm saying what the residents are saying. The residents are saying they don't want it anywhere in Annapolis, but what I'm saying is, and I'm gonna be a realist, we don't want it based on what they're telling me, anywhere in Ward three at all.
Okay. Okay.
Alderwoman Charles, uh, the Walgreens you spoke of, that is, that's the Walgreens I go to, that's the Auto Parks Place, and that's where I go to, and I eat at that, uh, the Jewish jelly there makes fantastic food. Uh, it's interesting you say the parking, I've experienced that myself, uh, but that's not really, uh, a lot of what I experience when I go there. What I experience when I go there, uh, is the pervading smell of weed being smoked, uh, in the parking lot after it's being used, I go there all the time, and it's all the time I'm there, it's, it's just pervading smell. Are you hearing comments from the community regarding that as a complaint? Or any other complaints, uh?
The main complaint I've heard is, now, now, now that I think about it, yes, I have heard that complaint. But the main complaint I've heard is about the parking, but no, now that, uh, and I hadn't even thought about it. But I have heard the complaint about, uh, the smell on the parking lot.
Okay. Also, uh, when there was, uh, a lot of consternation about the initial store going in there from the county's, uh, county allowed, the state allowed, uh, that store is, uh, approachable by a public bus from the rest of the city, and there is a massive parking lot that goes with it. So, and, and I've seen the amount of traffic, Ms. Charles, that goes there on a routine basis, day and night, I mean, I go to that mall. I go to that little shopping mall at least four times a week. Uh, and it's quite significant, so a marijuana store draw, that marijuana, that, that medical cannabis store draws a lot of people. Uh, and I've seen it from young people going in there to old, you name it, uh, so a lot of people, so any cannabis store that's gonna go in the city, your parking issue, I, I think it would be an issue, you, you, if it's gonna, if they were gonna have one in the city and that, and it actually got approved through the council or whatnot, you're gonna see something that's gonna need a lot of parking to go with it. You're gonna need buses that are able to, uh, make it to it, things like that, the existing one for the county already has all of that, so you've got it, we, we've already had to deal with getting a pot store uh, or a medical cannibals, a cannabis store, which is serviced by a huge parking lot, it's serviced by public transit, major roadways go into that. So, it, you know, putting more in the Ward three area just seems like you're just piling it on. And, and for me, the air quality is more of an issue, and I, I think I'd, I'd be interested in, over the next two weeks, hold the residents, what they think if the air is changed around them, cause I know in DC, when I go into work to DC, you drive them through all the neighborhoods I have to drive through, and the parking garages, it's everywhere. It is, it's, it's all over the place.
I will say that the relative, the, the residents are very vulnerable, because they looked at the map and they saw where Ward three is the most vulnerable for, for these dispensaries. And what I will say is, I mean, we have a, a great relationship on our council, we don't always agree. But if you look around and you look at some of the wards, I mean, you know, s- and I'm not saying, I'm not saying this about my council members at all. But any council member and say, Timbuktu might say, well, as long as it's not in my ward, let them have it out there in Ward three. I mean, they've got all the space, they've got the commercial industrial areas out there, but my council members would not say that. But, but I, I would say this, that there would be council members in other jurisdictions who would say that, who would say, put it out there, they've already got one anyway. And like I said, we've gotten things we did not want and things we've wanted, we couldn't get. And that's, that's, you can just drive up and down Upper West Street, and anybody who's got, you know, uh, any sight can see that. And that came from, uh, uh, that came from the 1989 comp plan, and it was stated in the 2009 comp plan.
And one last thing I have for you, Alderman Charles, is you mentioned six, the 660 plus minus feet from, uh, Monarch Academy. And, and a mi- about a mile or less from Germantown Elementary, where my, where my kids go to school, my kids went to both of those schools. There, it was mentioned earlier by Alderman Gay that there was a mile limit from schools or something, but obviously that's not the case here, can you elaborate on that or any knowledge?
No, I cannot, I did send my legal brief to the, to the Cannabis Commission for the State, that was when we were, uh, fighting the county, uh, part of it, and I even had some Supreme Court cases, um, that I cited paralleling liquor stores with cannabis. Although there had not been any, um, um, Supreme Court decisions based on Canada, cannabis, I used a parallel argument for liquor stores for that, but no, I'm not aware of, of that at all. Um, but it's six, because as Dr. Nash knows, when Mr. Gutwold was here, the, the measurement was done, it's 666 feet.
Certainly not 5,280, which is a mile. Okay, and yeah, I, I'm done with my questions for Ms. Charles.
We've got, I think, five church, five churches, a park, um, five houses of worship right around within that a thousand, thousand feet, and if you look at the county, what the county has done, they're, they're looking at it from where that dispensary is down to South River. So, and that's what they use as a measurement. And so my argument with is technically, you could literally put a dispensary right there in Ward three. Next to the one that's already there, because their mileage is going out south in a south westerly direction. And so that was my, one of my arguments too, you could literally do that.
Okay. Any other commissioners?
Yeah, so I do have one question. You brought up the, the smell in the parking lots and I've, I've experienced that as well. Um, the, the traffic, the parking is bad, it's not prohibitively bad, I can still usually find a space, but it's a pain. Um, is, I'm assuming it's not legal to be smoking marijuana, even if it's medical in the parking lots, right? And so it's just no, is, is somebody just not enforcing it?
I don't think.
Is it just not being?
I don't think it's, I don't think you can. I, my understanding is you have, it's like, I guess liquor, you have to, now, I'm not for sure, don't get me wrong. But what I will say about the parking, Mr. Ives, is that we have elderly residents who, who go to Walgreens. And if you can't find a handicap spot and you're on a walker or a cane or whatever, that's a long walk. If you have to, if before, when it was Rite Aid and before the dispensary, um, you have to walk a certain distance, that's pretty tough.
You're right. I, I sometimes end up parking in front of the bagel place because there's no parking spaces in front of it at all. So I, I completely agree with you on that. I, I'm just more concerned about.
A lot of prescriptions.
Yeah.
They pick up a lot of prescriptions from Walgreens.
And I am concerned about a business not being a good neighbor and letting people do these, and you know, they should be responsible. In a way, or the, or there should be some enforcement that they can't sit there and smoke in the parking lot. And you know, it's, it's just not a, it's just an irritating thing, but it's also just not good for the, for the community in a lot of ways.
You bring up an item of what's enforceable, right? You know, what are the police willing to do, what are they willing to step in and do and what's enforceable? Some things are and some things aren't, you know, the liquor stores. People, I mean, I go to liquor stores up and down West Street and people are, you know, some people are drinking right as they get out. So you, it's what's enforceable, what's not, I guess. Uh, any other commissioners, questions, Ms. Charles?
And let me, can I make one other comment too, please? Um, the thing about Rite Aid, well, now Walgreens, half of Walgreens, if you cut it north and south, half of it's in the city. And half of it's in the county, literally. And so whenever there's a call that goes out, you, you may have a city, uh, uh, officer or a county and or a county officer showing up. And it goes all the way to the back of Fitzgerald and there used to be a running joke because it was Bay Bowl was back there. And people used to laugh and say, you know, we bowl in the city, but we eat our food and go to the bathroom in the county. And so that, that line goes straight through Walgreens. So that is, is something that a lot of people do not know. So the enforcement issue is a difficult one.
I have a uh question, a follow-up question about the parking. So let's, let's um play the game that instead of uh a dispensary being in that parking lot. Let, let's uh make the assumption that it was a neighborhood restaurant that everybody really liked. That the, the, the neighbors liked, they liked to go there. And because it was so popular, uh, there wasn't a lot of parking. Would, would there still be the same issue over parking if, um, if the use of that building were not a dispensary? If it were something that people liked?
Mr. Plin, uh, to be quite honest, with my residents, and like I said, a lot of them are older. I think you would still have that problem because we've had other parcels of property in Ward three. Where parking was an issue and we have it in the residential section. And people complain about the lack of parking. So I don't think it matters even if it was a restaurant or whatever it is. Because we've had the similar issues when there wasn't a, a cannabis dispensary, when there are parking issues and we've. And, and uh Dr. Nash knows, we did last summer, a quality of life walkthrough in that area on, in the parole side, the traditional part of parole. And they were brought to their attention, a lot of parking issues. So I don't think, based on the history and what I've seen, no, it would not matter.
Because what, kind of what I'm getting at here is that, um. You know, when, when we're asked to think about parking with respect to zoning and all this kind of stuff. Often the use is very important in terms of, uh, you know, parking requirements and, and things that keep people happy. Um, so if it's, if it's not a function of the use, what we're really talking about in this legislation is a use. Should we allow this use? And what, you know, kind of what I'm hearing at least around parking is, we just don't want a building there because it takes up our park. I know there are other issues about air quality and that, and I, so I, I agree with those uh very much so, because I personally don't like the smell. Um, and I can always tell when people are smoking, uh, when they drive by me on my bike, because I can smell it when they're driving. But anyway, but what, what I was, if, if you allow me to just make a few more comments about use. Because that's really what, you know, this legislation is not about any particular building or. You know, use in a specific, in a really specific place, like they want to put something on this corner and we have to decide, okay. Is that, you know, is that appropriate? Does it have impacts to have something in that really specific location? We're talking more generally about uses. And as you guys all know, you know, I find use, use-based zoning kind of the wrong tool. You know, it's zoning is not really a good, good tool to prevent things you don't like. Because what you like might not be what somebody else likes. I mean, that's not, that's really not for me to decide. That's, that's almost really a political issue. Um, and so like with tattoo, with tattoo parlors, uh, you know, I look at that, that use as ephemeral. You know, we, we want to make our building stock to be as resilient as possible. Maybe today it's tattoos, maybe tomorrow it's something else. So I, you know, I think use-based zoning is, gets really restrictive. And, uh, you know, so within that, you know, I, again, we've talked about this, that the difference between the PM and the P zoning. To me is ridiculous. I mean, why, why have all these essentially spot zones? But you know, all that aside, I, I think the way, what the legislation says that, um, you know, circle back to use. Because unfortunately, that's the way our zoning code reads. The, the issue of dispensaries being more or less the same use as a drugstore. I, I, I happen to think that's a pretty good analysis or an analogy. Because they really sort of are the same thing. Now, I'm, and now I'm taking away what you think of that use. And you know, I think ultimately, a lot of this discussion gets around, you know, what people think of that use. And uh, you know, that, that to me is sort of more, more of a political process. Along with, uh, you know, this idea of, of, you know, a, a distance. You know, I, I understand that the distance to a school, that's a sort of health and safety thing. I, I, I can see that argument, but I don't want it in my neighborhood is, that's a political issue. And you know, I would advocate for this commission, not, not to make a judgment about that. We, we're just talking about the use, whether we think that's a, you know, should be allowed or not. And you know, that's, we, we render our recommendation and uh send that downstream to the city council. Where it's inherently a political discussion and so that. I, I advocate that we don't talk too much about that, uh, limiting distances. We'll let somebody else work that out politically. Okay, I'm done.
And any other questions for Ms. Charles? Ms. Charles, you had something?
Can I make?
Yes.
Yes, yes, I do. Uh, thank you, Mr. Plin. Uh, and going back to the two thousand nine comp plan. Like, uh, I'll, I'll reiterate that we looked at preserve and enhance community character. And land use and economic development. And as I indicated, we have a protocol, we've had fifteen significant uh pieces of property that we have followed the comp plan on. Annapolis Towns at Neil Farm, Taco Bell, Chick-fil-A, SSZ Self-Storage. Maryland Automobile Insurance Fund Building, seventeen fifty Forest Drive. Monarch Academy, Blackwell Property at Aristie Allen Boulevard. A proposed distillery, Town Courts at twenty-ten West Street, Parole Place. WNAV Property at two thirty-six Animal Drive. The City's Department of Public Works Campus on Hudson Street. Accurate Auto at four hundred Chick-fil-A Round Road. The Kitty Academy, um, is proposed on West Street and Lidl Food Market. And what we have done, uh, Mr. Mr. Plin, is we have attempted, for lack of a better word, to undo. How we were, um, I guess, treated uh in the nineteen eighty-nine comp plan. And it's really, really hard. And the residents feel like they were not respected. And uh, we can call it a political, uh, uh. Uh, angle or whatever we want to call it. But like the plan said, the residents are frightened. And that's what I've got here in Ward three. In my sixty-six years here, I've never in my life seen anything like this. It happened when we were looking at the county plan, but this time it's much more vigorous and robust. If you look at Upper West Street and I, and what, and I wrote a letter to the editor several years ago. And I said, look at the entrances into the city. You look at um Severn River, sparkling waters, it's beautiful. You look at Rowell Boulevard, you have DNR and you come in with tree-lined streets. You come in even on Aristie Allen Boulevard, where you have your highway and then it, it narrows down. And then you look at West Street and it's appalling. And so that's a result of the nineteen eighty-nine comp plan. And what my residents are saying is, no more, we have had enough.
I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you about that, but all, all I'm saying is that. I, I don't think it's so, I mean, and this is a philosophical discussion that we should, we should have over dinner sometime, maybe. But it, I, I think what's devalued Upper West Street is, is things like the design of the road. The design standards of the building that essentially result in things like auto-centric businesses. You know, if you, if you, if you have standards that, you know, uh, allow things like a, uh, you know, a muffler shop, you're gonna get a muffler shop. If you have design standards that uh promote things like, uh, you know, a neighborhood business, you're gonna get neighborhood businesses. So I, I, I don't think it's, I, I think we always, we often confuse use with, uh. You know, the, the use, like what, what happens in the building with the form of the building? And what, you know, what I'm always advocating for is we, we, we allow the design of buildings. Uh, such that we get a certain result and you know, you, you're not gonna put, uh, you're not gonna put a muffler shop into, uh, into a row house. You know, you know what I mean? That's a design standard more than a use issue. So, I mean, again, that's a, this is sort of a, this is kind of a philosophical discussion. I'm sorry to get us off on that tangent.
I guess the bottom line is, Mr. Plin, we're stuck with what we have. And we don't want, and we're not necessarily trying to get rid of what we have. But we just wanna, we wanna be able to at least minimize what we do have. Um, and what could be proposed in Ward three. It's, it's really uh, uh, an unfortunate situation that is allowed to occur. And, and, and I don't want to say much more, except for the fact, if you look nationwide. In African, traditionally African-American communities, this is what has happened over and over and over and over again. And my residents are saying, no more, we don't want this anymore. We want to be able to control what's in our own, own uh ward. And they look at other wards that may have more argument or more resources to fight certain things they don't want. And so that's what my residents are seeing and that's what they are angry about. I wouldn't come before you if I did not, if, if you think about it in, in Ward three and, and parole. You don't hear us screaming and hollering about a lot of things. We're pretty placid about a lot of things. But when, when Ward three or parole comes out, it's for a good reason. We don't complain, we stay in our place in many ways. But when there's something that really gets in our craw, and that's very rare. And I've been on this council since December of twenty thirteen and most of the time, and I've no, and I've told my colleagues. I'm gonna vote for, if you are the expert, I'm gonna vote on it. But if there's something that's really bothersome, then I'm gonna say something about it. And that should be an, an evidentiary, a piece of information in and of itself. You don't see me coming before you all very often.
And Ms. Charles, you talk a lot about the residents uh making comments. Have you heard anything from businesses, uh, the commercial businesses up and down West Street versus having a dispensary next to them? Or have they not chomped in yet?
No, I have not uh heard from, from the businesses. It's mainly the residents and mainly the residents because the businesses are there from nine to five. The residents are there twenty-four, seven, three sixty-six. What the businesses don't see, the residents do. Um, and so that's the, really the answer to that, to, for me, uh, being there as long as I have. That's really the answer to that question.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Charles. Uh, any other commissioners have questions for Alderman Charles?
I think Alderman Gay has a question.
Miss, say again there, Mr. Plin?
Well, uh, Diane has something, go ahead, but I think Alderman Gay had his uh hand up.
But it would be the commissioners first and then we'll get back. Go ahead, Diane.
Um, um, Alderman Pendel Charles, I just wanted to know, had, has there been any thought about just trying to? Um, ban cannabis dispensaries in, um, Ward three?
But like I said earlier, they don't want them anywhere in the city. Um, but I'm more of a realist. When I proposed the two miles, I was screamed at for that. Um, and I've been here all my life. Some people, I was not necessarily surprised that, but some I were, I was. Um, so, but I'm a realist, like I said. And I'm willing to take the two miles as long as they aren't in Ward three. But my residents want none of it, period, in the city. And they wanted me to make sure that I said that to you all. I've gotta live here.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other commissioners have questions for, for uh Alderwoman Pendel Charles? Okay, uh, and for due to procedure, uh, we actually have to go for further witness. So we'll have to actually go to uh Ms. Tierney uh to actually talk now. So Alderwoman Tierney, uh, you're, it's your turn.
Thank you for that. Um, and I apologize if I seem rude. I, I just experienced being at two meetings at the same time with Zoom. Yeah, Ward one Residence Association meeting on, on the short-term rental, so I was sort of juggling that. Um, so I missed part of this meeting. Um, first, sort of, um, to give credence to, 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 to our review of use. And, and, uh, and, and the comprehensive plan and, and deciding what goes where. Um, it begs the question, when I look at the zoning map of where they are allowed and not allowed. There's a sliver, uh, it looks like it's on the top, the north side of Main Street. It's the weirdest thing, it's just this sort of slivered area that says, no, you can't put them there. So I just want to read inside your mind, um, I guess, our, our, our mind, our, our planning and zoning mind is, what's the thought there and why? I just want to follow the logic on what, where you decide something like this can or can't go. And that's sort of in line to, you know, what, what Alex was talking about. Is that somehow you do have to look at use when you make these determinations. So I guess my first question is, what is that funny area, Dr. Nash? That's, that's on the top of Main Street where they would not be allowed and why is the reason for that? So I can see what the thought process is. It wasn't, I hope it isn't a trick question.
Let me see, top of Main Street?
I think that's where it is, it's hard to say. And it, and that's where they would not be allowed.
Oh, in the C two P?
Yeah.
Um, right, so that zoning district is a conservation professional office zoning district. And it's pretty restrictive as far as its uses. It really only allows office use.
Okay.
So that is why.
So that's what I mean, what, I mean, not to get philosophical, so we do look at use, you know, I mean, to, to address what Alex was saying. Um, uh, um, so, but anyway, so the, the main reason I came to this meeting is I wanted to hear where you were. How we were looking at this and, and especially listen to my colleague, um, Alderwoman Pendle Charles. And since, since I first heard about this bill, um, and then what happened subsequent to that. And the, and the, the passion and the, and the angst that my colleague is presenting, um, has to be. I mean, why would anyone want to force-feed this when there is such objection from a ward? I mean, that has, you know, that, that, that just bothers me. It just out of, um, you know, courtesy to my colleagues. I, you know, when I first saw this bill, I thought, well, great, that'd be pretty cool. We could have one on Maryland Avenue, I guess, but, you know, but then we hit sort of this, wait a minute, there's some strong objection to this and it has to be considered. So I really wanted to hear Alderwoman Pendle Charles talk tonight and so thank you for that. Um, but the other thing is, what is the urgency in this? Um, you know, are there, are there? Um, you know, are there, are there, are the dispensaries knocking on the door, wanting to come into the city of Annapolis? You know, how many do we need? I mean, do we look at those kind of things? And I'm not sure where the question is in that, but um
I think I think Alderman Gay might have a good response for that. I'd allow him to speak. Alderman Gay, do you have a response or something you'd like to chime in?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. My response would be, um, you know, why will we push short term rental legislation when there's been such significant response against that? Why do we do anything when we get pushed back? Um, because we feel it's for the best and and for for the betterment of our communities. And so this is what my constituents would like to see. And so I put it forward because I think it would help significantly in the city of Annapolis. Um, and so that's why, um, I I think that the the argument that because one particular ward is against anything or because uh a a particular constituency comes out and numbers against anything, that's a foolish argument because we wouldn't have S T R V legislation uh before us right now.
Yeah, I guess, um, I I'm not sure if we should, you know, conflate the two two issues. But um, but so so it's, so the answer to to my question is that there's a community wish for these. Is that what I'm hearing? There's a community wish for these, these, um, I just wanted, you know.
I represent uh the most arrested constituency in the entire city. Of those arrests in between the ages of sixteen to eighteen, a majority of those arrests are initiated because of marijuana. So the war on drugs did not suddenly stop in the nineteen nineties, um, post Reagan. It still continues today and people would like to see a change. And this is a part of change in the twenty first century, accepting uh the expanding opportunities of medicinal uh medicinal marijuana. Uh, and if the state um has their way, uh, it'll be decriminalized up to an ounce recreationally. And so, I mean, we just better get on board than get left behind the city of Annapolis.
Okay. Like I said, I'm I'm just listening. I don't I don't wanna really voice any sort of opinion other than, you know, having having the respect to listen to to my colleague on the objection.
Okay, and and that's exactly what we're doing is we're trying to get all the information out of the table right now and do a debate and we formulate debate and opinion later as we've heard all of it, so. And and in efforts of getting all of the information put on the table, uh, you are an alderwoman, so what are you hearing? Have you had a lot of feedback yet from your own ward or businesses in your ward versus residences? I'd like to hear about that.
Well, it it did, yeah, um. Right, right. Um, well, the residents are sort of concerned about, not concerned, they're questioning um, specific to Ward one. Um, the the responses I'm getting is right off the, right out, right out of the gate was why, you know, well, why do we need one? I go to this, you know, I I either go to, um, you know, on West Street or I go to the place at, you know, next to Trader Joe's, you know, or I go here to get, um, so there's this, that's the question is what, why, why? And then eventually we'll we'll see the S B, you know, have the have that opportunity to sell, tell, sell, you know, the prescription part of it. Um, so they're just questioning that right out of the gate is why? And then, and then saying, which is not really correct, you know, we do have C V S, so why do we need one, another one in Main Street? Well, C V S isn't a marijuana dispensary nor, you know, I don't know when it would be. Um, but then when you talk to the retailers on Maryland Avenue, they're more open, you know, to, okay, well, that's cool. If there's a market for them, we wouldn't, it wouldn't stop, you know, wouldn't preclude us from welcoming that business in. It wouldn't, it wouldn't, except then the guy at the corner there of um where Capital T's used to be is you know, he's already spoke at a, where did he speak? Or he had heard about it and got anxious about it because he's he sells, um, just the the, um, you know, the the other stuff, but so, yeah, they they're just just re, the question is why, that's all. Not like, no, not in my backyard kind of stuff, but um.
Well, I I think I think it's interesting that you bring up Maryland Avenue because Maryland Avenue is kind of like the the start of the black sheep of the of downtown sometimes are kind of forgotten, but there's no way anybody could park, they could do the, they could have the parking for marijuana dispensary on Maryland Avenue. There's no way, especially now that the the mayor's taken away a lot of the parking spaces already with Galway Bay and and given a lot of the residents, um, all the stuff from Marketplace, all those parking spaces got rid of made a lot more of those residential parking anyways. There's no parking anywhere as it is right now.
But it it could, per the zoning map, it is, it's, it would be an acceptable use.
Oh, yeah, but it is just, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't fit for other reasons, just because there's no way you could even park there.
Right, yeah.
And and that brings up a good point, and I'm gonna ask this to Dr. Nash. I've got, I'm I'm sharing the zoning map for that area, so where we see C two, uh, this is allowed, this would be allowed, right? Dr. Nash? If she's still there.
C two, C two P?
C two P, yeah.
It is not allowed in C two P.
But it is allowed on C two, so you see where my cursor is going up and down.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, C two is all around Church Circle.
Yeah.
Yes, it is permitted in C two.
There's C two uh across on Church Circle near the Governor's House, the Main Street. Um, and also over on Maryland Avenue, uh, you can see, hopefully you can see where I'm moving my cursor. See the C, C two A, C two here. And where you see the shaded blue, that changes to C one A up here and then C one A down here with some C two P. So there's a lot of a lot of C two down there where it could be. Most of downtown in essence, but then you go into what Mr. Iams is talking about. You've got a lot of limiting factors when you're talking about zoning and what and permitted use and do you have the parking for it and everything else? So, Dr. Nash, if you have a seat, this is one for the public here and everybody's education. If you have a C two area that has a permitted use of a medical cannabis store, does that in itself necessarily allow the cannibal cannabis store or would a parking requirement or something go along to stop it the way the legislation is written?
Well, it's, there's not going to be a special parking standard for this use, so you would have to look at the table of um parking requirements for um
Drugstores, basically, it's basically the same standards as drugstores in that regard.
Right.
Should it be, should it be more like the standards for a restaurant? Should it be a higher standard? Well, you've got a drugstore on Main Street that provides good service to people down there. Let's be fair. Lower Main Street, you have the pharmacy down there and there's obviously not much of a parking requirement for that, you know?
And and the way, the way the staff report is, the way the staff report is written is that uh, you know, it's 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 their their conclusion that uh the kinds of, the the two uses between a dispensary and uh a drugstore are similar enough that they're gonna have similar requirements in terms of parking and, you know, all that kind of stuff. That's, that's why they put them, that's why they put them together, so they have the same, essentially the same standards.
I think that's a really hard thing to be saying that they're very much similar because there's a C V S on every corner. You know, it's not like there's there's these everywhere, you know, so it's, so how can you compare the two? I I have no idea how they can be compared.
Well, but also to to get to your comments, David, that this is exactly what I was saying. If you, you know, if you, if you design for people, if you have design standards for people uh that instead of design standards for cars, you're gonna get people. People, you know, maybe a a place that requires a lot of cars to go there couldn't be in a place where there's no parking. So, you know, that that's it, that's kind of what I'm trying to get at the big picture here is is it's a, it's it's almost a design issue more than a a use issue?
And if it's treated like the pharmacy at a low lower Main Street and you know what the parking is there, then you could have it conceivably with this legislation in a larger portion of the downtown area. So, okay.
Yeah, and 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 of course downtown, that C V S has a big parking garage right behind it too.
So I said
At the moment, it does. Yeah.
Right, because many uses in C two don't require parking unless the use is over a certain size because there are public parking facilities available. So depending on exactly where this would be located and exactly how big it would be, um, you know, it might not have any parking requirements.
Okay.
Well, to get back to the beginning, the intent of the um exercise that Planning and Zoning did was um to forestall clustering of a uh type of business which has certain moral implications. Uh, like liquor stores have had for many years. Um, or massage parlors have had for many years, or tattoo parlors have had for many years. Um, bars and restaurants and so forth. And what I think Alex is getting at is that you look at the kinds of businesses that have a great flow of people and then you set design standards to deal with great flows of people or cars or buses or whatever and then um and then you according it, you work accordingly and you forget what kind of use it is, is if it's not a people use that requires cars, you have certain different design standards. But let's get back to the beginning, which is, um, there are obviously strong objections. There are some moral stances uh that have been taken here. The science is well, at at this point, the science is arguable in both directions as to whether the use of marijuana uh uh minimizes the use of opioids. There's definite science in favor of that proposition. And then there are other people who feel that it's a drug, it's a gateway drug and that the science, you know, we don't know enough yet. And so it's not a good thing to have around young people. And so that's why the school requirements are put in and so forth. So why don't we look at that instead of going back and forth on some of these things? Why don't we look at, well, what are some ways um that we can be sure that these kinds of things are spread throughout the city? Or if the fact is that there will only be one other one in the city, why don't we be practical in terms of where that might be and and how would we, well, frankly, protect Ward three? Um, but leave the possibilities open uh in some other publicly accessible place, publicly accessible by transit, publicly accessible by walking and by car. So why don't we think in those terms? Why don't we look to see what a one mile radius would be, which is what the state is required? Why don't we look to see real carefully as to what the, you know, one and a half miles would be? Where we, where practically speaking, would the consequences fall? And that's what I think we should look at. And I I what I would like to see is is a compilation of the zoning map and the circle maps so that we can really see what's possible where. Because I don't think it's, I agree with Mr. Iams, it's not, it's not likely to fall into Maryland Avenue or to Weston Annapolis Street. Practically speaking, it's the Esport Shopping Center or the Hillsmere Shopping Centers.
I'm not, I'm not parking in Weston Annapolis.
Well, okay. We can listen at the next meeting to Mr. Alderman Payone if we would like to. Or we could look to see where, you know, practically speaking, what are the consequences of of pursuing the a a strategy that says, okay, we're not gonna cluster these things. Justice has been done with liquor stores. And why don't we look, why don't we compile the zoning maps and and the school map and the circle maps? So that your underlayment to schools and um um, um, and and the zones and then the overlays are the different circles and then really see what the consequences are and then we can make a reasoned recommendation to the city council.
You bring up an exact thing that which I was gonna recommend a little later on, is seeing a layered map, a better presentation uh from from that we can, from staff that we can see the actual uh, you use satellite imagery, which is better than looking at this regular map if you can. Uh, I believe you can do that uh with the G I S system. And get uh the overlays and pinpoint where the schools are, the churches are, things like that, so you can actually see where those are located versus where you could actually have.
I I do, I I do have a question apropos of that, Mr. Sale. I do have a question and that is and I, it's actually unclear to me if um if there are any state requirements as to distances from schools, churches. I can't remember what other category there was.
Doesn't seem like there are.
No.
Doesn't seem like there are.
There are not. The state does not say you have to be five hundred feet from a church.
No.
The state does not say you have to be six hundred and sixty six feet from a school.
That's inaccurate.
No, that's the county has the those requirements.
But we were not, we wouldn't be subject to those requirements.
Correct.
Correct, okay. So we're in the free and clear with respect to schools and churches?
That is my understanding. I think Alderman Gay does not agree with me, so I I can get clarification for the next meeting, but
If you need clarification, that'd be appreciated.
You understand, Dr. Nash, what it, what I think we're looking at in terms of maps?
I think so.
I see your hand. We'll get to you, Alderwoman Charles.
I will do my best, but um I I will do my best to have this to you, but.
Do you, would would you like me to um sort of write it out, what, at least what I'm thinking of? Would that help?
I understand sort of the map that was in the staff report showing where they're allowed but overlaid with the circles.
Right, and I would like to see a a one mile circle in addition to a mile and a half and two miles.
Okay.
Okay, and then we could sort of, you could help us through and highlight the areas where things would happen. And I think we need um
Mr. Gay, we see your hand as well. We'll get to you.
A final thing, but for Mr. Gay, just let me, one final comment. I also, it's my understanding that there is a state requirement of only two in each senatorial district. Will that prevail also? Or is that waived? Maybe Mr. Gay knows the answer to that. It is not, excuse me?
That applies.
That applies. So in actual fact, we're looking at the location for one more of these.
Yes.
Practical, practically speaking.
With an existing legislation that could change in the future to be as many
Well, okay, it's, you're right, as social mores change, then legislation will change, we'll follow, we hope. Okay, that's all I would add so for the future discussion in two weeks. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Wallman. That'd be some useful information. Sally, if you need more clarification, I can help with that. And Mr. Wallman can or any other commissioner, we can email Sally with our request in the week to get more uh definitive picture, but some overlays, you know, slide after slide where it shows overlays and brings up some of the concerns that the county, the council members have brought with uh everything.
It will help the council in its own, at the council.
And we haven't finished with Ms. Tierney yet, so she still gets first chance in since we have
Oh, wow, so thank you. I'd love to Um, I, before we conclude on Ward one, I just don't want it to be misconstrued that parking um limitations is 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 gonna nix any of these. I mean, keep in mind that we have a four hundred and twenty five car garage, you know, right next to C V S and soon to be, from what we learned this afternoon, five hundred and seventy five spaces. And then for Maryland Avenue businesses, they have the St. John's Garage readily available um on weekends. So I don't think that we can use that argument that parking is restricted downtown. I mean, you know, it's, we got, we're gonna have a behemoth garage there. So anyways, just wanted that that fact out there.
Yeah, I was, I was just referring to Maryland Avenue in particular because St. John's garage is only available on weekends and people don't know where it is and it's pretty far away from Maryland Avenue. So that's why I mentioned that.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I I think what 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 Bob mentioned about morality is really what I just wanted to close the loop with this is, when I was saying a political process, I'm really talking about morality in the sense that I'm just generally very uncomfortable with with this, this group making morality decisions or trying to use zoning zoning rules to to uh sort of um kind of legislate morality choices or or try in, as Mr. Waldman mentioned, that uh essentially trying to to uh to arbitrate that between two different camps on on the morality of this. And and I'm just very uncomfortable with this organization playing that role because I don't think that's our wheelhouse.
And I would agree with you, and that's not what I'm gonna do. I'm not gonna choose morally, I'm gonna choose based on the knowledge uh of what the use would entail and how it would affect its local uh uh surrounding uses and things of that matter. So and what's the reality of this, you know, where do we see? And we should also look as a commission of uh where this use is approved and used elsewhere, Colorado, Colorado Springs, Washington, D.C. A lot of places we can get that information. Uh, and as as you can all go and research on your own to see what the effects are and how people have dealt with it, because they've already dealt with it for three or four years at least. So you can see how it affects local businesses around them, whether it's next to a hotel or anything like that. Please go out there and get that information. But, Mr. Klein, I'm not looking at it from a moral standpoint at all. I'm looking at it for what's right for the community use wise and how it affects everybody around it and taking on what everybody says and hearing what your aldermen, our aldermen, older people say. And taking that into consideration, so, because hey, it's what the people want on the whole. So, all right, any other commissioners have any questions for Ms. Tierney before we go on to the other on the whole. So, all right. Any other commissioners have any questions for Ms. Tierney before we go on to the other council members again? Thank you, Ms. Tierney for that, uh, uh, that information and over to Ms. Charles and then we'll hit Mr. Gay. Miss Pindell Charles.
Thank you so much. Um, to pick up on what Mr. Waldman said, um, about the one mile, that does not help Ward three. And that I go back to the word in, in the 2009 comp plan about the residents, the residents are truly frightened. As to the morality issue, one cannot step away totally from that issue. We have nine and all of them are different denominations, churches in Ward three. Um, you cannot separate pastors as being different than any other citizen. So morality is thrown into the mix just like anything else. But what I'm saying is there are a lot of other arguments that I made today that even step away from the morality. And so I understand what Mr. Plin is saying, but what I'm saying is that's not the, the end all be all. There are others and I don't want to leave pastors out and, and pretend that they aren't part of the residents as well. Or they don't represent a group of people who are residents. And so we don't want to get, um, to that point. The other thing is too, um, we, I don't want to go down the slippery slope of parking. That should not be a determining factor. We got in many ways, a lot of parking out here in Ward three. So that should not be determined of what we have here in Ward three, if we've got a lot of parking. Uh, and the last thing I want to mention as far as schools are concerned, I'm getting anecdotal information and this came from two educators at Annapolis High School. They have seen a difference in their students and they're there every day. And the lethargicism, and I don't know if that's a word, but the behavior of their students says that, uh, dispensary has been there on West Street. They are very involved and Alderman Gay, I'm sorry you're going to laugh at me. I'm sure I'm very funny at times. And you laughed several times since I've made my presentation and that's good because I love you too. Uh, but anyway, um, they have seen a tremendous, uh, difference in the behavior of some of those students. Now, like I said, I got it from two educators who are there every day. This is what they're telling me. I can't discount that, what they're saying as well. And they're both Annapolis residents. So thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity at this time.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Charles. And, uh, since, and we're getting late on time, I'm going to let Mr. Gay speak and then we'll go into, uh, further commissioner talks. Because we do not have, uh, documents from the public that made it in time by noon today to start presenting even more into the late hour. Uh, anything that we have received after noon today, we will continue that to the next meeting and present all of those comments. And I'm sure we'll have a lot more as well to present then. And we don't want to get into back and forth here, uh, all night long. So, but hey, uh, Alderman Gay, go ahead. You had some.
Yeah, I would encourage the commissioner uh, to check out the Maryland Medical Cannabis Commission webpage. It has all the facts as it relates to zoning, uh, that the state set. Um, this is actually sent to me in an email through the Office of Law on November the 12th of 2020, when we first started negotiating the legislation and the details of this. So I'm not just pulling this stuff, you know, out of the air. Um, and, and then, uh, two, I would just take into consideration the laws. You know, it is highly unlikely that a 16 through 18 year old is walking into a cannabis dispensary in the state of Maryland and purchasing any medical cannabis. And if they are, the entire operation should be shut down because it's illegal. And so I think we are mixing recreational use of marijuana with the medicinal use of marijuana. And that should be taken into consideration because they are two completely different things. Um, and then lastly, to the point that, um, Commissioner Plin had, had made, I would ask that the Office of Law follow this process carefully because it is very easy um, to fall on the moral slope of this argument and, and get into the weeds of what the individual Alderpeople want. I think that is something that can be ha- handled at our council meetings as it relates to our particular request. Uh, but you know, just what the space is fit for, that's what the space is fit for. If there was a vacancy on Forest Drive and I wanted to put a church there, I don't think that because my neighbor was an atheist, I shouldn't be able to put a church there. It's fit for a church. It can hold a church. So we'll put a church. You know, I mean, I don't think that we should get into what the individuals around want to see, because if that was the case, we wouldn't have accessible dwelling units. We wouldn't have bike lanes. We wouldn't have public. I mean, there's just so many things that the public would be able to, uh, you know, go against and the commissions would have to bring in moral compasses in every single thought. Those are just my thoughts. I look forward to cooperating with this, uh, commission. I want the best results for the entire city. Um, and that includes, um, residents who are, are, are worried. Um, but I just want to do it the right way on, on all of this. And so I appreciate you guys, even in this late hour at almost 10 o'clock for taking this into consideration.
Mr. Gary, and that, the email from Legal, could you actually send that with the link to Jackie Rouse and she'll send it out to the rest of us, uh, for information? So any information, we're glad to have from any side. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll forward that over. Yeah.
To Jackie Rouse, R O U S E. It'll probably pop up on your email too, Ron, very quickly.
Well, yeah, Jackie was the one that sent it to me, so.
And you know what? Maybe I already have it in my inbox. I need to go double check again. So I'll, I'll look at it. Okay. Any other commissioners have any quest, uh, comments or items to speak of?
Would you be willing to accept anything from us as Alderpersons as well, Mr. Sale?
Anything you want, anything you want to send, send to Ms. Rouse and she will dispense to us. That's the condo we use. Oh, and we like to use her because, uh, that way we don't get into the back and forth with one individual, uh, commissioner and start going to X bar communications. It could get really messy. We want to make sure everybody has the information. So you send it to Jackie and then Jackie will send it to all of us. So yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Any side, um. All right. Any other commissioners, uh, uh, actually any last minute comments from council members that we still have? Ms. Tierney, any?
Okay. So, so I agree. I agree with a lot of the conversation that's happening about not going down the moral slope. I just think there's a lot more than I need to learn about what, what the real impact of a medical marijuana dispensary is. And, and what I'm saying is I don't think it's the same thing as CVS. I don't think it's the same thing as a restaurant. I think we just have to look at what is the impact of the one we have already? And go from there and, and get a better idea of what it is. That's what I'm trying to figure out. Um, cause it's, I don't think it's a moral thing for me that I have to worry about. That's it.
But yeah, okay. Any other commissioners, comments? All right. And I encourage you to find out what's going on elsewhere around, uh, you know, I've, I've heard the stories from Colorado Springs and family members, friends going skiing out there and how things have changed. So, uh, look into it, please. I encourage all of you to find out in existing locations where they have, uh, many stores like this, what's happened, but also talk to friends like I have, uh, that have medical conditions and that have gotten addicted to opioids and then used, uh, medical marijuana at the same point. Uh, to try to get away from that. So there, there's both sides of the story and I, and I understand both of them. Uh, but we have a store on West Street. Look at that. And, and hopefully we can get more feedback from businesses around there with a businesses thing. Uh, cause they're the surrounding uses around that existing. Uh, and, and if they have an issue, so please, everyone go get some more information. Any other commissioners have anything else to add, Mr. Uh, anyone? Cause it is getting late tonight. It's been a tough one last time.
Yeah, just, just one last thing about the businesses. As I indicated, the businesses are only there, I'm not going to say we can't get anything. They're there from nine to five. They're focused on their business. The residents are the ones who are there 24/7. And, and to, for me, their, 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 um, desires and wishes should be, should wait more than the businesses should. But that's my, my opinion.
Okay. You might be surprised. A lot of businesses might side directly with you, uh, in your view at the moment, uh, from what I've heard out in Colorado. Okay. Uh, any last minute comments? Cause we do have to wrap up the meeting and the commissioners and proceed on our agenda. Let me share that real quick.
We need to put the exhibits in the record. Um, C one would be the staff, uh, report and C two would be the, um, dispensary maxed.
Okay. For Ms. Tammy Hook, always keeping us honest. Uh, we've got to take care of our admin issues at the moment. So, uh, the public hearing is remaining open for OTAC four, TAC 21, man, medical cannabis dispensaries through to our next meeting. And we have to enter into exhibits as Tammy just said, Tammy, could you read those one more time? And we'd like to enter those in the record, exhibit one.
Uh, C one would be, um, staff memorandum dated March 8th. Um, C two would be the one and a half mile buffer of current dispensary max.
Please enter those into evidence for the record.
Thank you.
Okay. And any member of the public, if you'd like to submit comment or perhaps for, uh, show in person on video on Zoom, go to the planning zoning website and there's a link there to do just that, to submit your testimony. If you want to just submit, uh, written testimony with a form, they have the form online. Or you can also, uh, submit, ask to present, uh, and get your three minutes. So please, the members of the public, give us all the information you might have or comments that you want from any, uh, any ward. And OTAC four, TAC 21 is continued and open till the next meeting. Moving on to item F, uh, miscellaneous. Do we have any miscellaneous items to take care of from staff or commissioners that we know of at the moment?
Yeah, I, I, I have, I have something I'd like us to consider. And, um, based upon what Ms. Butler said earlier about the possibility of, of adding into, um, applicants, uh, projects, some requirement to at least consider, um, the possibility of, of green energy. And I'm not quite sure what it is that, uh, she's thinking of. Um, but I do think that would, would come in the way of a letter from the planning commission, if we all agree. Um, a letter from the planning commission to the city council, uh, requesting that it be added to the, um, I don't know. I, I'm not quite sure where, if it's a city purchase, uh, obviously it goes to, uh, the, uh, it, it gets, it should get added into the RFPs. Um, but if it's a, uh, an issue with respect to, um, site design and so forth, um, it would be, have to become part of legislative. I, I, I guess it would become a part of legislation or added to the design standards. I'm not quite, quite sure which, but the thought is interesting to me is to begin to require of all major designs, um, a consideration of, um, alternate form, uh, well, not alternate forms of energy, but green energy. So perhaps.
Look to where the, look to where the lead standards are and that, that I think is your guide, guide.
It does.
Yeah, I agree with that. Um, and I think that's what Leo was pointing towards, uh, Leo Wilson. And so I'll be happy to check and see if that has to happen via an ordinance or whether we can do it through regulation. But I, I would support that wholeheartedly.
So just a matter of clarification. So if, um, if lead standards were enforced, then, um, green energy would become a part of that?
Right, we could. Standard that said for every new, um, building, public building, government building, um, in Annapolis, you know, they have to right now be lead silver, for instance. We would also, they have to have the ability to be, you know, have EV charging stations, you know, up to 50% or a hundred percent or whatever we decide. We just, we build it into all of the, we build it into the standards essentially going forward for.
Well, two questions. One, one is you, you're talking about only public buildings and.
More than that, but if we're, the, the issue with Department of Public Works came up because that was supposed, it is a public building, you know, by, it's a government owned building and we really thought it was going to be state of the art, fabulous lead standard, the highest lead standard and all of that. And we didn't quite get there. We got a good project, definitely. But I'm just saying going forward, we can meet those standards because we will be reviewing, um, those standards early on in the process versus after the fact, after they've heard from the planning commission and the AEC and all of that, it'll be part of their design um, standards from the get go instead of retrospectively.
Yeah, all I was suggesting was that, uh, you look, we look to where the lead, where the code talks about lead and look to that part of the code to possibly insert something along these lines. That, that's what I was getting at too, when I mentioned the lead standards.
That's what I, that's the right place too. I agree.
Uh, uh, maybe, uh, I'll talk to Tom Smith. Try to get some sense of where we are with this and what it might, you know, and, 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 and if it can be translated into larger private buildings as well. All right. That's my only thought for miscellaneous.
Okay. Thank you very much. Excellent. Any other items for miscellaneous? Anyone? All right. I want to thank everyone for their participation today. It was, uh, fantastic. And we finally got this item opened up and it'll be out for two weeks. We'll have a lot of comments to go over at the next meeting. The next one will be a, a, a big enchilada there. So. All right. I have nothing further to add. With that, can we get a motion for adjournment? I'll move for a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor of not say hi?
Hi.
Any positions?